Khoran, what's up? I see you fresh. You're looking good, bro.
I know some people.
Alright.
Hey there, Mr. Gaines. That's the campaign trail for you. Guys have months of rice or bread for coffee.
There's nothing I can do about it. I need to accept that and continue on.
That's what the embers are for. We're not gonna lose anything.
How you doing, received?
Okay, it's good to see you. Okay, good. Come and ask the hard questions. Come and ask the hard questions. Good seeing you.
Yeah, it seems like I'm me yesterday.
So we're gonna be starting in about 6:10. Just gonna wait for like a few more people to come in?
Yeah.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Shoshana Wepther and this is Lindsey Geringer. And we are members of the League of Women Voters of the Ann Arbor Area. And we'd like to welcome you to tonight's forum featuring candidates for the August primary for City Council. The candidates will be on the ballot in the August election. So the League of Women Voters is pleased to sponsor these forums. The League is a nonpartisan civic political organization that encourages informed, active participation of all citizens in government. The League works to increase understanding of major public policy issues and seeks to strengthen and broaden knowledge about our form of government and democracy. While the League does not support candidates or parties, we do take stands on issues we have studied. One of the League's most important goals is to assist voters in making informed choices at the polls. And thus, we bring you tonight's program. Our moderator this evening is Roberta Wojcik Andrews, who will explain the format and get us started.
Hello, welcome to the candidates. Thank them for being here. Welcome to the audience. The forum today will have this format. Each candidate will have two minutes for an introductory or opening statement. Each candidate will have two minutes for a closing statement. In between, we have questions that have been prepared by the League based upon community input. And then we have some time for written questions from the audience. I think thirty seconds, fifteen seconds, and then zero. The timer will be...
I'll just have a thirty and a stop.
Thirty and a stop, sorry.
Is that enough for everybody?
Thirty seconds and then stop. They'll hold up the sign. Please, candidates, please stop when indicated so that everybody has an equal opportunity to participate. This is not a debate, so don't address your answers to each other, address them to the audience. And regarding questions from the audience, the total... Must come up to the microphone. There's a sign-up sheet in the back. Each person has one minute to ask their question. You may only ask, come around once. If for some reason you've signed up and your question has been answered previously, feel free to pass. Please direct your questions to the entire panel. Refrain, if you are interested in an answer from one particular candidate, try to frame your questions so that you're asking everyone so that everyone has a chance to answer. And with that, we are going to start with opening statements. We're starting with Ms. Brown on the end, and then we'll go, come straight across that way.
Okay, thank you. So first, my name is Nicole Brown, and I am currently on City Council, serving as the Mayor Pro Tem for the City of Ypsilanti. I would like to thank the League of Women Voters for inviting me and posting this forum. I'm really excited to be able to speak to community members and really answer anybody's questions about what my plans are and experience in running for council. I've been on council for the last four years with the term expiring in November after the general election, and do hope to be re-elected, of course. Over the last four years, I have learned a tremendous deal of things. Running for council was something that I had never envisioned for myself, but with the work that I was doing in the community and the folks that I was interacting with, I just recognized that, you know, I could have a seat at the table and have a voice and be a voice for the voiceless and be able to advocate for the needs and the wants of those who live around me, for those, my neighbors. And so I'm just really excited about the opportunity to continue the work and to continue to serve the community, and I look forward to hopefully doing so. Thank you.
Hello, everybody. My name is Khoran Gaines. I am appointed official as a Human Relations Commissioner here in the City of Ypsilanti. I kinda got involved in the community through my Stop the Violence Music and Comedy Tour I created about two years ago. From there, I got to learn the real needs of the community, which really gave me the drive to step forward to really get to this point, to where I'm running for actual office as elected official. I think as an elected official, our number-one job is simply hearing the people and what they want and what they need and bridging the gap between our city hall and the people. So that's my number-one goal that I plan on bringing to World One.
My name is Adam Gainesley. I am currently the Treasurer of the Ypsilanti Downtown Development Authority, the DDA. I've been the Treasurer of that organization for just about three years now, and I've been on that board for coming up on six years here. During that time, we've taken the budget of the DDA from very deeply in the red to balanced as of this budget cycle. So I've learned a lot and enjoyed the process of balancing a budget in the face of pretty serious financial constraints, something that's going to be very valuable to YPSI in the coming years. Last year, I was the campaign chair of Citizens for YPSI, which is an organization that campaigned for and successfully passed a millage to pay down the Water Street debt, which has been plaguing, for lack of a better word, Ypsilanti's finances for the last, coming up on twenty years at this point. As a direct result of that, for the first time in ten years, Ypsilanti passed a budget without making cuts. In fact, there were additions made to the budget for the first time in a decade this year. So between those two, I like to think that I can get big things done in Ypsilanti and work under pretty tight financial conditions, which I think is a good fit for Ypsilanti. Also, I more recently have been working with an organization called YPSI Live. We've been streaming City Council meetings and other public meetings around town, including this one, so hello, YPSI Live. Thank you, thank you for tuning in, everyone who did, did. And I've been streaming City Council meetings for the last six months or maybe even closer to a year at this point, bringing access and visibility into what the city is doing, which I think is very important at this point.
Hello, thank you, League of Women Voters, for inviting us. My name is Anthony Morgan. I'm a citizen of Ypsilanti. I currently work for the Ypsilanti Public Schools. I'm a restorative coach. I'm a basketball coach. I'm a parent. I run, I'm a president of a group called People Power, and I'm a co-founder of a group called Radical Washington. I've worked with social justice issues and community issues in the way of events and providing events for different populations, like seniors, youth, mainly youth, families in political arenas, social justice arenas, and sports. The name of my campaign is YPSI 2034. The goal is to look fifteen years into the future and create collaborative ideas that will take Ypsilanti further as opposed to every two or three or four years waiting for something new to happen. So the goal is to see further into the future. And with that, it's a campaign called Yes. Youth, environment, and safety are the core foundations of my campaign. And I just wanna say, I got into this because of the fact that when you're involved with different portions of the population, you get to see a widespread of issues, and to be able to meet those needs, like Adam said, you had to be able to hear and listen, but moreover have thoughtful agendas and plans to be solution-oriented. So thank you for having me here.
Thank you. Alright, we are starting with one, two, three, four, across again for the first question, and then I'll call out who will be first on the next one. First question, there are times when the demands of serving on City Council involve the time demands of a full-time job while paying nine thousand dollars per year for the mayoral position, seven thousand dollars per year for the Mayor Pro Tem, and five thousand dollars for a council seat. How do you plan to balance the demands of the position with other responsibilities or jobs that you may have during your term? Nicole Brown?
Sure. Well, I've currently been doing so for the last four years, and I will admit, there are times that it's very difficult to balance, you know, a full-time job and then the other pieces that go along with regular life as well as the council life. It is, it's demanding, but it's rewarding work. And so, to be honest, the main thing that I do is I really, I use a really in-depth calendar to make sure that I am planning things out and making sure that I am pointed about what time I'm giving to each thing. I make sure to plan out ahead, looking forward rather than trying to plan week to week, but also just knowing what things are priorities, so prioritizing. If there's something pressing that's going on in the city that takes, takes me away from work, I do have the flexibility to make sure that I can attend those things or attend to those things. But I really do think it's just about prioritizing and knowing what the needs of the community are while making sure that I have a healthy work-life balance, which includes my full-time job, being on City Council, and then my own wellness, mental health wellness, and safety. So, thank you.
Well, for me personally, me being an entrepreneur gives me a lot of time, space to create and do things for the community that a lot of other people wouldn't have the time to do. And like Nicole said, it's all really about what you really wanna do. If a player wants to be a basketball player, you have to put in the work to be a basketball player. If you wanna be a leader in the community, a political figure, you have to put the work in. It's only twenty-four hours in a day, and you gotta have the time for it. And the way my life personally is geared and set up, I have the time for it because this is what I wanna do.
Thank you. Adam?
Well, happily, I've had a little practice over the last few years being on the DDA. Well, it's not as intensive of a schedule as the City Council is. That has been a good insight into how this, this life is going to treat me. I'd also like to quickly describe my summer last year, which was a very good trial by fire in terms of living a full schedule. I was on the DDA, I was working a full-time job, and I was running the campaign for Citizens for YPSI. And during that time, my son was born eleven weeks early and spent nine weeks in the IC, or NICU at St. Joe's. And we still ran a successful campaign. I kept up with my job, and my son came home happy and healthy. And they didn't kick me off the DDA, so I'd call that a successful trial, if you will. And the honest truth is, I live on being busy. You know, I don't expect this to be easy, but I expect it to be fun and challenging, and I'm looking forward to it very much.
Thank you. Anthony?
Well, it costs more to be poor, I'll tell you that. I worked for AmeriCorps, and they gave you a stipend to be able to do the work that you do, social justice work. So when you, when you have to provide with less, you have to be creative. And I would use these things called the five Ts. First, I would use what tools are available to me. I think tools make things easier. I would take the tips, any kind of tips people would have to give me a framework on how to use a little bit of money and make a big impact, certain techniques, how to spend money on using calendars, creating templates with how to spend money, ways in which to control my spending and habits. And then last, a timeline, try to split the money up between twelve months in the calendar year. But basically, I'm a framework kinda guy, so I would take it and make it work. So doing a lot with a little is what I've been known for.
Thank you. Okay, we'll start the next question with Khoran Gaines. I think this is related, so I'll ask it. Some members of the community have asserted that city government is not listening to their concerns, and that council proceeds with actions that they oppose without considering their opinion or position. How do you plan to make sure you receive and hear community input before deciding on an issue?
By simply having consistent town hall meetings. And as much work as we, I believe that you put into your campaign, you should put in when you actually in the seat. If you're knocking on doors now, when you get in the seat, you still should be in the neighborhood knocking on doors. And like I say, consistent town hall meetings is very important. Instead, it's just showing up, letting the people know that you're there to where they feel comfortable with telling you their complaints or their issues.
Thank you. Adam?
Sure. Well, in terms of visibility of the city, this is of the work the city does. This is a very important issue. An issue I touch on at City Council a lot during public input is the fact that we live in a news desert. So it's not easy to get the word out. And that doesn't mean that we can just let it go and pretend like that's not happening. It's something we need to address. That's part of why I've been working with YPSI Live, to make sure that we're streaming City Council and other meetings, but also advocating for the city to install their own audiovisual equipment, which is something that's actually happening now thanks to the budget that was just passed. This has been included, so that's an important piece of it. So that's, that's how we're getting the word out about what's happening at the city. Khoran's absolutely right that we've gotta be out in the community, listening to our constituents, listening to the community. You know, that's gonna take many forms. Knocking on doors and town halls are both great ways to accomplish that. Office hours are gonna be very important. But it's also a matter of just getting out into the community and going to the meetings and events that are happening and seeing what's happening and listening to what's happening and listening to what people are saying. One of the things that I'm known for in Ypsilanti is showing up. I'm at meetings, I'm at events, I'm there, I'm talking to people, I'm finding out what's happening and keeping a beat on the pulse of the city. And that's absolutely something that I'm gonna consider a very necessary part of my time on council.
Thank you.
Well, as important as it is to listen to constituents, it's important for constituents to be active also. So I do wanna do a great deal of listening, but I would like to listen for solution-oriented action. So I do think the modes of input, finding different ways to be able to receive input as opposed, like the Ypsilanti Public Schools have a messaging system that anything that goes on of importance automatically calls our home, the whole school district. And so we get the necessary news. And I think if City Council could develop something to the point where it would remind citizens of when meetings are or what's important on the bill, I think it's more of a technological issue. And then having some kind of mandatory position that can hold up a bill from passing when a certain perspective is not being reflected. I think certain things do pass whenever, when there's not enough credible eyes on it. So certain things can move along, but I think there should be some way to halt those processes until an equal equitable perspective is looking at the bill.
Thank you. Nicole?
So I think a lot of what I would say has already been said about being out in the community, being present, attending events, also creating some type of list serve particularly for, for World One, knowing that we don't have news that flows throughout the community to make sure that folks know what's going on, going door-to-door, making sure to have town hall meetings. All of these things have already been sending really great answers and things that need to happen. Really excited about the fact that in this current budget, we do have audiovisual a part of it to make sure that, you know, YPSI Live is doing a great job, but that the city can also take the lead on getting our information out and making sure that people know what's going on and can, and can be a part even if they can't make it to the physical space. And so really developing those things further, making sure that our website is up to date and that it can send email blasts that are accurate out to people, as well as the regular mailings and the word of mouth.
Thank you. Here, we'll start the next question with Adam Gainesley and go in the same direction around. Decisions at the county and state level affect Ypsilanti's budget and our ability to adopt certain policies. How will you advocate for the city at the county and state level in Lansing?
That's a great question. So, first off, part of it is, again, just showing up. These are all public meetings that we're talking about. These are public organizations. We need to be tuned into what they're doing, showing up to those meetings, advocating with our county and state representatives, and, and talking to them directly as well as, as politicians and as citizens. There, there is an occasional mindset of council members that we see from time to time that this is an insulated job and you can just show up to meetings and go home and be done with it. That's not at all how this works. This is, part of this is having a network, part of this is being aware of what is going on at those levels above us, and not just the county and state, but also the federal level, and being aware of how those policies affect us as a city. And responding to them, either by passing resolutions at the local level, advocating at the higher levels, or interacting directly with our representatives going up the ladder. So as part of my work being on the DDA and advocating for various issues with, with the city, I've already started to build that network and build relationships with our representatives, again, going up the ladder. And I intend to continue doing that, and really just being cognizant of what's going on. The state revenue sharing issues that have been going on for the last decade or more that have cost Ypsilanti millions and millions of dollars are a prime example of where we need to be continuing to forge ahead with advocating at the state level to improve and rectify that situation. And, you know, this is a bit of an extreme case, but in this case, we actually need to be looking at lawsuits, I think. Ypsilanti is considering or has become party to a lawsuit at the state level that is pushing back on that, that set of policies, and I think that's something that I'll continue to support.
Thank you. Anthony?
I think it's important to have direct lines of communication with the county level and the state level. The state currently is thirty-three billion dollars in debt, so in certain things on a local level, we're gonna have to take the lead and not follow from the top down. So I think there's certain initiatives and plans that Ypsilanti can do that protects Ypsilanti. And I don't think everything that the state enacts or that the county enacts has the city in mind. So I think having some people who can watchdog for the city as we make these very public partnerships. I think aligning the issues from a state, county, and city level, if we can align the issues and have direct lines of communication, I think these would be credible ways to be able to work, like, to work in conjunction for something that's better for the city and, and not just take what we can get.
Thank you.
So I really feel like it's definitely about relationship building and making sure that there are open lines of communications with those who represent us at the county and the state level, and making sure that we're consistently communicating with them. I think that sometimes, you know, the message of what Ypsilanti needs and the things that we are advocating for on our own local level don't necessarily make it as far up to the top as possible because those relationships may not be continuous and those conversations may not be continually happening. because those relationships may not be continuous and those conversations may not be continually happening. And so making sure that that is happening and showing up to those meetings as well and being present and asking questions, and then also advocating on our behalf and sharing about what we're currently doing. That two-way street and that shared communication can always find, you know, common ground to see where we can work on things together. And when those relationships are positive, then you can see positive results. I do think there are also things that we do have to fight against, and I think Adam touched on that with revenue sharing at the state level. That's been an ongoing issue and so continuing to advocate for that and advocate for our community and the others that have not received the revenue and the shares that we rightfully deserve and are owed. That does not mean that we're going to push against what's happening across the board, but making sure that we stand our ground around what we are owed and what we deserve, so.
I think definitely, once again, time. You have to have the time for the community and you still have the outreach at the higher levels. Like they say, relationships is everything. Without relationship is no communication. So we have to constantly communicate at the county level, state reps, at the senate level. And simply, it's, like I say, it's time. It's a lot of hard work. We have to do everything all across the board on seeing what they have going on at a higher level and what we have going on to try to merge right in the middle somewhere to where we're not left out of anything. So once again, just having the time to build the relationships, to go to all the meetings. Because like Adam said, they're all public, you know, and open to the public. So time, having the time to build the relationships.
Thank you. This next question will start with Anthony Morgan. Washtenaw County's 2017 Millage for Public Safety and Mental Health included about $400,000 annually in unrestricted revenue for Ypsilanti for eight years. How do you think the city of Ypsilanti should use these funds?
We were asked this question last night. And I do think monies that are collected for intended purposes should be used for those intended purposes. But you asked the question of how, and my ideal is, I know mental health is not just an Ypsilanti issue. It's not just a Washtenaw County issue. It's a world issue. So I think it takes collaboration, meaning that if we have $400,000 and we partner with two other cities with $400,000 of funds matching, we have maybe 1.2 million to be able to create a base and have some type of research or programs in a space or a hub. So I think the money should be spent creating partnerships with people who have at least as much information or experience or resources than we do. So I think for us to try to take it on the loan because we have some money would be problematic.
Thank you. Nicole Brown?
Well, you know, we recently tackled this topic on City Council about how we should spend the funds. And some of the discussion was around public safety, you know, fire and police, training, making sure that those officers and those who show up as first responders are equipped to really interact with those of the community who may have mental health concerns. I think that that is definitely the route that we are going on and should continue. But also, just at our last meeting, because we had some extra revenue, a surplus for once that we've never had, I was able to pass, help pass an amendment that gave $25,000 per year for youth programming in the community. And some of the feedback that we had gotten from those who are participating in youth-serving organizations was that young people's mental health is a huge piece of what is at stake right now with all that's happening in the world. And so making sure that we're not only spending the money directly on, you know, police, fire, and those things that people initially think of when they think of public safety or mental health, but those pieces that are left behind or that are not usually talked about because those voices are not at the table. And so making sure that we're spreading the funds around to make sure that everyone has what they need to be equipped to work with one another and support one another in the community. And I think that that is a move that we've been trying to make and are getting better and stronger at as we continue these discussions going forward.
What was the question again?
Let me repeat it. Washtenaw County's 2017 Millage for Public Safety and Mental Health included about $400,000 annually in unrestricted revenue for Ypsilanti for eight years. How do you think the city of Ypsilanti should use these funds?
Okay. I think, once again, we should collab with other local cities in the area as far as the county and create some type of hub to where we meet in the middle. Kind of like what the brother Anthony Morgan said on, to get a bigger budget. That's, once again, having the time and then building the relationships still with the county and the state and the senate level. So mental health, I believe, is the most important thing specifically for Ward One. Without us actually putting anything into it, I really can't see how Ward One could grow without us focusing on the mental health. And then speaking as a city overall, Ward One is the area that needs the most work. So for us to move forward, that'd have to be something that should be real important, you know, targeted for Ward One.
Yeah, so not to become too repetitive here, but it is a very good point that we need to be communicating across the county and region on opportunities here. This is a brand-new revenue stream for the city. It's just beginning now. And we need to be communicating well with our neighbors throughout the region to make sure that we're taking care of any opportunities for economies of scale here. There are a lot of things that we can also explore internally within the city. Police training is something that I think Ypsilanti very much needs. That's not to say that we don't have a police department that is working hard for us, but we are in a time when we need to make sure that our police are equipped to deal with the issues at hand. We're in a region and country where mental health has gone under-addressed and undertreated for decades. And our police are often the first responders in situations where they have to deal with mental health issues. And too often, we see them treating them as though they were crimes. And that's absolutely unacceptable and unhelpful. Housing is also an issue, not just in Ypsilanti, but in the country as a whole. There is a housing shortage and that disproportionately affects people with mental health issues. And so I think there are some opportunities there to improve housing access for people who are in particular suffering from mental health issues. And finally, I'd just like to thank Nicole for getting that annual fund set aside for mental health in particular in Ypsilanti so that we are ensuring that at least some of this money is being directed the way taxpayers expect it to be directed, even though the county doesn't put a restriction on it. There is a perception that this is money they are paying taxes for for mental health services. And so I'm thankful that we've locked in some of that in Ypsilanti for that purpose. And the last point I'd like to make about this is, we have, oh.
Okay, I'm not sure. I want to try to reverse so that we're not going around this way. We want to go around counterclockwise, but that's what I've got on my list. Let's see, so we're actually going to start with Anthony and go back again. I hope that's okay. Ypsilanti is one of only three cities in the state to elect its city council and mayor on partisan ballots. Would you support moving to nonpartisan council elections?
Well, I think the way we select our city council is widely unknown and how difficult it is. The fact that it's 18 election methods, then it's a different criteria for whether it's a single-member party, whether it's partisan or nonpartisan. So I think, it can happen in a myriad of ways, but I would sup- I would be reluctant to sign a nonpartisan agreement. Is that the question?
Yes.
Yes. I have an idea that people should stand by their beliefs. They should stand by their party affiliations. They should stand by their principles. And I think when you have a party and when you have policy and you have people lobbying for policy, I think it'd be more credible to, I would vote partisan as opposed to nonpartisan. I would keep it the way it is.
Adam?
I do support nonpartisan elections. The only question I have is, what format is that? Is it a runoff? Is it a, you know, any of the other formats that that election can take, a nonpartisan election can take? We do need to recognize, as we answer that question, though, the challenges that that presents. Yeah, Anthony's exactly right that it can make it more difficult to understand your candidates. We're used to looking at blue and red tickets and being able to slot people into two rows. The problem is those two rows don't address the issues that happen, especially at the local level, but even more broadly at the state and federal levels. So I think we need our elections to more broadly or more accurately reflect who we're electing.
I think that I would like to keep it the way it is. I look at, when you represent a party, it ties into your morals and your values and what you stand for and what you believe. And like Adam said, it'd make it too difficult to kind of see what your candidate is fighting for or where they stand. When you are part of a party, it kind of speaks for itself, you know, pretty far down to where you know about where that person is coming from. So I would like it to stay the way it is.
Thank you. Nicole?
I do think it would make things a little more difficult to go to nonpartisan elections, but I'm not 100% against that idea. It would really depend on the, kind of like what Adam said, what that process would look like. I agree that alignment with a party can sometimes tell people a little bit more about you, about what your values are, but I don't think it fully tells the story. I think that you can be a part of different parties and really understand attributes of another. And so I guess I would say I would be 50/50. It would just really depend on what it would look like because I think each individual does have the ability to really carve out what, you know, their morals and their values are. And regardless of what party you're with, there are many ways that we align and many ways that we do see things similarly as well. So it would really just depend on the scenario for me. But, I mean, at this point, since I don't know what that would be, I would stick with what we've got. But I'm not completely opposed to it.
Thank you. Next question is going to start with Adam Gainsley. Given the recent outcome of the attempt to develop Water Street, what is your position on a community benefits ordinance?
I'm supportive of a CBO for the main reason that it is a great opportunity for us to increase engagement in the workings of our city. As we've brought up a couple, at a couple points tonight, it is very important that our citizens are engaged and that we are engaging with our, not just our constituents, but our citizens as an entire population. So if it hasn't passed by the time I'm elected, I'm looking forward to supporting that process and continuing to evolve that ordinance and update it as we move forward and discover what works well and what doesn't. But it's absolutely critical that we take every opportunity we can to engage our citizens.
Thank you. Karan?
I definitely think CBO would be most beneficial because it definitely wouldn't be pushing the people out that's been here. You have people that live here for so long and put in work. And when you bring something new, you get workers from other locations to help build the location, work there and things of that. So I think having a CBO would keep it in-house to where the residents here will feel a part of whatever growth that we're trying to bring. So I'm definitely pro for it.
Thank you. Nicole Brown?
So yeah, I'm in full support of the CBO and have been and have been working with, along with council to really try to tease it out and make it happen. I absolutely think that it's imperative to have increased public input and increased community engagement as well as giving those who are interested in doing projects in our community a format or an outline, if you will, for what to expect when coming into the community to want to work with us and utilize our land that is available. So I am in full support. I think that it's really important. It's past due and I'm excited that I have been a part of the process thus far and hope to see it through to practice.
Thank you. Anthony?
That's a great question. I think with community benefits ordinances, what's important is like the contracts and the developers and the relationships built. But I think if, when new development starts, if we can have safety standards, I think we can have fair compensation. We could involve our unions. I think how we build, what we build is more important than just having an ordinance because it should be a benefit to the community in every way. And so I think if those things apply, like with safety standards, compensation, like you say, using certain workers within the city of Ypsilanti, using our unions with these big contracts, I think that'd be a benefit to the Ipsy so that it would really live up to its name.
Thank you. All right, next question's going to start with Karan. Rising rents and real estate prices have caused many residents to find it difficult to afford a place to live in the city. What can the city do to increase affordable housing in the city?
I think definitely first starting with educating our residents on the importance of homeownership. Being in a city with 67% renters, I think that should be the most important thing to help build on our tax base. You look at Eastern Michigan, it's, I believe it's like 40% of our land area. And we don't make nothing tax-wise off of it. And then the other 10% goes to local, other local things like policing and sanitation, things of that nature. So I, what was the question again?
So the question again is, rising rents and real estate prices have caused many residents to find it difficult to afford a place to live in the city. What can the city do to increase affordable housing in the city?
Well, we would have to, policy-wise, pass a few things. But like I said, educating the residents on homeownership and the importance of why. I mean, that's the only way we can really build on our city tax-wise. And, yeah.
Thank you. Nicole?
So I think that, you know, one thing that is really important and something that we have had discussion about is making sure that there are affordable housing components in developments that make sense. So there are times where we've seen things that have come in to the city or developers who wanted to work in the city. And we've asked that question about, you know, what is the option? What is the potential of having affordable housing as a part of this new development or the redevelopment of a property? So I guess the first thing that we can do, that we do have the power to do, is request and ask that from the jump when someone comes to us and says, "We want to build or we want to rebuild in this community." I think the second thing that we can do is really look at, again, I think I agree with Karan about educating our constituents about the importance of homeownership and the importance of, and their rights as a renter, too. So making sure that we're holding our landlords accountable, making sure that we are making, that when we're doing our inspections, different things like that, that we're making sure that they have these rental properties up to par and that they're not overcharging someone for something that is not appropriate. I mean, I think there's a million different ways that we could probably, and I can get involved, but I absolutely believe that it starts with us taking the lead when developers enter the community.
Thank you. Anthony?
Yes. I hope affordable housing doesn't mean exploit of housing. So like you said, with a 67% renter base, that 33% property owners, especially homeowners, feel a big brunt of the tax pay for our public schools. When you think about homeownership, I know people think about socialism or they think about regulation when I hear, when I say put a cap onto how many properties individuals can own in the city of Ypsilanti. Some individuals own upwards of hundreds of units and houses. And so I think that, so we had to put a cap in some way of what a private owner can own. And that's another thing, when the private sector starts dibbling in public affairs. And I think that can be problematic when so, so it has things to do with increasing rent when they have to pay so much of a millage to pay the taxes. And so these things are hand in hand between failing school systems, increasing housing rates. And so I think we need to sit back and look at how these scales work together. But putting a cap on homeownership and not allowing the private sector to dictate public living.
Thank you. Adam?
So the first thing that I always think about when I think about housing access and affordability in Ypsilanti is that we need to step back from Ypsilanti as a constraint on that discussion. While it is an issue that affects our city very directly, it is not an Ipsy issue. It is a regional issue. It's even a national issue. As I pointed out earlier, there's a national housing shortage. So what can we do on a local level is start to see what's happening regionally and even starting as locally as the county and think about what we can do locally to have a positive impact on the region. Certainly, adding stock is part of the solution here. We have 30 acres of undeveloped land in the middle of the city. That's a huge opportunity for adding some density. That's a huge opportunity for adding some density, adding some, some stock. And it doesn't even necessarily have to be focused around affordability. The market dictates that adding, adding stock will improve affordability in general. The other thing we need to recognize is that affordability, housing affordability is directly tied with access, which means transit. If you look at a map of the transit network in Washtenaw County, it's basically just Ypsilanti and Ann Arbor. And that kind of makes sense because going back far enough, Ypsilanti and Ann Arbor are sort of the core of jobs and the core of housing in the county. But if we're going to improve access to housing and thereby approve, improve affordability, we need to expand that network outside of those two cities. So supporting transit is a, is a good part of that process of improving affordability and access throughout the county.
Thank you. All right, this next question is going to start with Nicole Brown and come back around to Anthony's second. Let's see. City residents currently pay over eight mils of property tax just to cover shortfalls in police and fire pension and retiree healthcare funds. This liability is growing. The millage is over four times of what it was before 2005. How would you address this?
Good question. How would I address this? Well, individually, I don't know how I would address it, but as a body, I mean, I think that it would be important for us to look at ways to decrease the retiree pensions, pension in the millage that we're paying. I think that we also need to look at different ways to increase the city's revenue so that way we can kind of offset those costs. And I think that that has to do with economic development, that has a lot to do with, again, property taxes, homeownership, ways to bring funds in that can help offset those numbers and hopefully lower the mills in the future. Yeah, and I think it's something that we've been actively working on and trying to figure out, and it's been kind of a conundrum, but continuing to try to lower those pension, those pension ways that have to be paid out.
Thank you. Anthony Morgan?
Could you repeat that question for me one more time?
City residents currently pay over eight mils of property tax just to cover shortfalls in the police and fire pension and retiree healthcare funds. This liability is growing. The millage is over four times what it was before 2005. How would you address this?
Well, I think property owners, because we're talking about property owners who are dealing with increasing mills, not renters, but I know there's a way to pass the buck on the tax, but we have to spread homeowner base out so that it can be equal, equal, it's a burden on those who are paying because they're property owners. So the people who don't own property may not feel that stress. So I was wondering, who is feeling stress? Which residents? And I'm almost willing to bet it's the residents who own things. And so the people who don't own things may not feel this stress. So I think, again, with people who own hundreds of places, if we can spread it out and allow, because people, there are viable people who can afford homes, who've been through homebuyer programs, who are looking for situations that they can move their families into so they can invest into more communities, so the community can share the brunt as opposed to a few people who have a lot. So I would, again, it starts with homeownership, spreading it out, and I would freeze the police budget, not the fire, because the police budget was steadily increasing. And since the numbers reflect that Ypsilanti has been relatively safe over the last three or four years, it's not like we need constant police or even the trainings or more resources. So I would deal with the police budget as, and give more access to housing so the community can share the burden.
Thank you.
Looking at the taxes in Ypsilanti, generally speaking, it is an issue that we have high taxes. And I recognize that's a little bit ironic coming from somebody who has advocated for the Water Street Millage over the last several years, but that doesn't mean it's not true that our tax rate is something we need to address. And part of the reason we need to address that is because it is actually renters who end up paying the unfair burden, unfair balance of those taxes because non-homestead properties are taxed at a higher rate, a significantly higher rate than homestead, homestead properties, meaning that homeowners who live in their own homes are bearing less of the burden than renters. And that brings us back full circle to housing access and housing affordability. That tax on non-homestead property trickles down to renters ultimately, so we need to recognize that as the issue here. As for the police and fire pension taxes themselves, I don't purport to have a good direct solution to that immediately. That is something that has plagued our budget for a long time, and that's something where we need to be exploring alternatives such as combining those costs with other communities, exploring other revenue streams and other ways to, to offset those costs from taxpayers. The one thing that is not a solution though is cutting our police and fire department's legs out from under them or from our retirees. We're not going to stop paying into those. We're not going to default on those debts that we've given to our, or that we've promised to our, to our public safety officers and firefighters. So it is, it is something that we will need to deal with, and it is something that I look forward to understanding and finding a solution to.
Thank you.
When it comes to this, I'm kind of uneducated, so I would rather pass on the question.
Thank you. All right, we're reversing order again. I think we'll start with Karan. The League of Women Voters registered over 1,100 high school seniors to vote this year, and the League heard from them that they are concerned about homelessness, jobs, and gun violence. Many of those new voters are in the city. How can you address their concerns?
By being active in the community, once again, having the time to actually go out and be in the community, be seen. It's simple as showing up to events. Residents have events in your ward, you know, you're supposed to show up. That makes them comfortable enough to be able to tell you exactly what's going on. So simply keeping that relationship going and showing up. I think creating opportunities for the youth to come out to speak. For example, like I spoke earlier, consistent town halls. You rarely see a town hall meeting specifically for the younger generation. So by me being younger, that's ideas that I do have to not just do the old, modern-day political way of doing things, but include the youth because they are our future. So their voice definitely needs to be heard.
Thank you. Adam?
Go ahead this way now, okay. So first off, thank you to the League for advocating for getting high school students to vote. This is, this is a fantastic effort and I greatly appreciate it. Thinking about gun violence in particular, out of the issues listed, we're at a point in Ypsilanti where we're, for the first time in a long time, adding to our police force. But that's only part of the solution to addressing crime in general and in particular gun violence. We also need to be training our officers to, to respond with de-escalation and non-discrimination responses as opposed to our recently suggested at the federal level, shoot first and ask questions later policy, which is abhorrent in my mind. So having a well-trained police force that has enough officers to engage the community, work, and work from a community policing model, I think will be crucial for a number of different issues, including gun violence in Ypsilanti. So advocating for a well-funded and well-staffed and well-trained police force is part of the answer here. Thinking about homelessness, again, this is, this is a regional issue that we need to be talking about and with a regional lens on. And I'll circle back very briefly to the, to the notes I had earlier, which are that we have to look at not only our housing stock in Ypsilanti and what the profile of pricing is there, but also our transit and jobs network throughout the county and making sure that people have access to housing, jobs, and recreation at all price points so that, so that we can work on reducing homelessness.
Thank you. Anthony?
I've had the opportunity to work with over 30,000 young people in the last 20 years, and I was just talking to a young person back, and the audience who was speaking about youth suicide rates, youth STD rates, job loss, did they say gun violence? I've been to city hall on record many, a couple of times, talking about gun violence or the need to protect the city council members and the mayor, and I've been to the Ypsilanti superintendent's office. And I wasn't know if I was met with acceptance or whatever, but it seems like then the national march came out about gun violence and we joined that, but we need to be less reactionary and more forward-thinking when we're talking about gun violence and STDs and homelessness as opposed to waiting for national agendas or for the best idea to come along. So I think with young people, I've helped organize six youth summits, organizations like Dedicated to Make a Change, Ozone House, Ypsilanti Library, Park Ridge. We have to support the already erected programs and groups that are already on the front line for our youth. So doing more volunteering, offering spaces for more counseling and things of that nature because I think young people are facing the increasing demands of what life has to offer them today, and some of adults have failed them. And I think that's what they feel, the frustration. They feel the damage, they feel the pain. So I think wrapping our arms around them as a community. And I'm quite interested in wondering what youth felt this way. Because I know Ypsilanti is a big city and Ypsilanti is a vast, have different pockets, not no different students and young people get different accesses to different things. So I'm just curious to know how we can support that with the organizations that we have currently.
Thank you. Nicole Brown?
So again, I do agree that we need to support existing youth programs, and thankfully we do have a start with the $25,000 that's been set aside for both the next two fiscal years to give small mini-grants to programs that currently exist. I think supporting new youth initiatives and increasing youth voice and making sure that we're supporting youth being at the table. You know, we talk about homelessness and gun violence, you know, those are things that are fed by like community traumas and individual trauma. And I think that making sure that those that we interact with from city council all the way down to your neighbor, being aware and trauma-informed of the why that people do the things they do and what creates those barriers for young people and having those conversations. I think, you know, connectedness is really the most important thing that we can do to help combat those issues currently in our community with our young folks. As long as they have one safe or one productive, positive adult in their lives, that can make a host of changes and a host of difference than anything financial or fiscal could do for a young person. So making sure to increase our activities and youth initiatives, making sure to support those that already exist, make sure to make room at the table for young people, and then, you know, using what we have fiscally to also support financially in those initiatives.
Thank you. This is the final prepared question that we have, and we'll start with Adam. With recreational marijuana possibly being legalized in Michigan, what can you tell us about how you think the city should manage or needs to manage the change in the law?
That's an excellent question. So to begin with, we'll have to comply with whatever state-level regulation there is on marijuana. Presumably, it's going to be regulated similarly to alcohol, so we'll have to make sure that we have the infrastructure in place to comply with that requirement. There will also be a need for our police to be trained to respond to that sort of intoxication as it might be, become more, more common. And we don't want to be, we don't want to be creating an issue out of something that might not otherwise be an issue. Frankly, this is a change I welcome. This is going to stop creating criminals out of everyday citizens who are partaking in, you know, what would otherwise be a perfectly reasonable activity. So broadly speaking, you know, I support us treating it the way it should be, which is as a non-criminal activity. And as long as we're complying with whatever regulations the state set out for us, I'm going to be happy to, to support that process.
Thank you. Anthony Morgan?
I do think the seven dispensaries within the city of Ypsilanti are seven of the most profitable businesses here in the city. That means they're making money hand over fist. That means that there has to be a plan somehow to share that revenue and not have a seven-year plan to extract close to $30,000 from each of the dispensaries, which is less than 2% of their income. So I don't know how I can do that, but creating a way to, if it's going to be legalized and if it's going to be more visible, if we need the infrastructure, if it's going to be seen and more kids and more people have access to it, not only is it going to be regulated, but we should somehow benefit from it as a city. It can find its ways to, because I don't see the trickle-down from having seven dispensaries. I don't see better parks. I don't see better schools. I don't see more, better streets. I just see more pot. And I'm not against it. I just think that somehow, some way, we can find credible, more creative ways to, I don't want to finagle, but I do think to be able to get some revenue from these, this new law being passed, because you see the billboards about what it does to Oregon, what happened in Washington and how it's clearing up economies and why can't it do that for YPSY?
Thank you. Nicole?
So I do think that we need to make sure that we're following the state guidelines that are going to be rolled out to us, and we've already been trying to stay within those and staying abreast of what's happening and staying up to date on changes that we have to create or make once we get new information. I do support, you know, any business that's going to be lucrative in the community and create some agitation as it comes to, you know, the tax base and bringing revenue into the community. But I also agree and feel strongly about decriminalizing marijuana in the community as well. I think that that is single-handedly one of the most overlooked issues that we have in our community is the criminalization of those who are utilizing marijuana for medicinal purposes or have access in the right way. And so making sure that, you know, our police and other community members are aware and are well-trained on, you know, what this looks like and to not stigmatize those who are utilizing marijuana for medicinal purposes. Thank you.
I think overall, tax-wise and, you know, creating revenue for the city would be great, but I also think being a candidate for the representative of War One, I can see it being a bigger problem far as drugs are still drugs. When you're high, you're not in your right mind. And so legalizing it, yeah, it could bring money into the city, and I'm kind of for it, but in the same sense, when I look at War One, I don't see it benefiting the youth there. I see it opening the door for youth to come in and just get pot all day, every day and stay high and stay missing form. So in order for us to grow, War One has to be uplifted, you know, for our city to grow as a whole. I don't think overall, like I said, financially-wise, yes, of course, I could see it helping, but it would still keep the area that's most needed to be uplifted down, which is War One.
Thank you.
All right, so at this point, we have questions from people who signed up on the audience participation sign-up. So the first name is Sue Melkey.
Hi.
And each, each person will have one minute to ask the question.
One minute to ask the question, and it looks like we're going to start with Anthony Morgan on this question and then go over to Nicole.
Thanks.
Thank you. For those of you who are new, wanting to be elected, I want to know five concrete things you want to do. And for those of you who are seeking reelection, I want to know three concrete things you brought to the council personally and two more you're going to do.
Three and two. Thank you.
I think having an inspiration and aspirations to do, having the plans to do, having an agenda to do is different than having the support and the resources to do. I have, I have a few plans, and I was thinking, the first one, looking for a state-of-the-art family center down here where the Water Street is. This is one of the plans. I was thinking about a nice skating rink. I think people go from, to Canton, they go everywhere, and people don't come here to spend money to go skating. A nice, well-lit, family skating rink where you could do roller blades and then roller skates and just have a good time with your family. I think that's something that's to bring revenue, to make it a place where different communities can come visit, to find out what we're known for. I think having a revitalized campaign for seniors called I think having a revitalized campaign for seniors called, um, uh, it's called, uh, accelerated living. We want it to be able to beautify some of the senior citizens homes and make it more accessible, to have nights like First Friday, to have nights that benefit the value of seniors. Um, I think those are some things that we need. I was talking last night about even the, the space on water street, but having a collaborative space to grow food. I know Growing Hope, uh, does an excellent job of procuring and having a space for, um, organic, fresh, um, accessible food, make that on a bigger scale where we can have a, um, supermarket within the confines of the city, since we don't have one, um, where we can have a training ground that che- teaches people bee harvesting and hydroponics and how to do urban agriculture. I think that's a very, um, it's a way to share food, because those are the things that are common against, about all people, all color, all skins, we all eat. So I think, um, having a, a grocery store within, um, our city limits would be, um, beneficial. You said five. One, I, I was thinking of a cool, like the cool cities, I just, four seconds, three seconds, two seconds, done. No, no, let me start.
Thank you.
So Sue asked about three things that I have done and then two new things. Um, so three things that I have supported, um, and worked on in the community. One would be, um, the creation of the Black Lives Matters Task Force that we had in the city. I was able to, um, co-chair that and we worked to revamp and, um, revitalize the citizen complaint process to make sure that it was accessible to everyone in the community, um, and was not in any way intimidating to anyone who felt the need to, um, forge a complaint against any city official, not only police and fire or city council, but any, any, any person who works, um, under the auspices of the city. The second would be, um, working to support having youth voice, um, at the table with the police community task force that was created. So making sure that we had seats at the table for young people, even if they were not over 18, to be able to have a voice and input, um, around what was happening in the community and what they wanted to see. Um, and the third would be, um, again, the, the $50,000 over the next two years for the budget for youth programming, um, for programs that currently exist in the city. I think that was a huge win, um, for our community, being that there for so many years we didn't have funds to do anything of the sort. And so starting small and hopefully continuing to grow, um, that number for years to come. Two additional things that I would like to do, I'm still, my burning desire is for us to have a, a new rec center in this community. I mean, I think that we've all wanted this for a long time and I'm still hoping, praying and pushing that that will happen, um, as well as working closer with, um, our first responders on diversity, equity and inclusion, and also trauma-informed interaction with our community members and constituents. I think that is a huge need, um, something that we have dipped into and are working with across, um, the city and with the county on, but we need to spend more time and dedicate more resources to, um, with those experts in those areas to make sure that we are, um, as inclusive as a, a community as we possibly can be.
Thank you. Karan?
Um, I think on a higher scale, um, first, I think fighting for, uh, the Amtrak station to be up and running in Depot Town. I could see that, uh, being unlimited far as, um, bringing revenue into the city of Ypsilanti on local level and at a higher, you know, scale, county-wise and state-wise. Um, also fighting for the right development for the water street project. Like Anthony Morgan said, I think we need to create something to other people from other cities come to spend their money here in Ypsie. Uh, we tend to, uh, me being a father of six kids, we tend to go to Canton a lot, Ann Arbor and a lot of other areas and, uh, spend our money. So we need to create something that's family orientated, um, for water street project as far as the Lucky Strike that has a bowling alley, um, outlet malls. Um, it seems real small and like it's not a, a big thing, but I've been driving to Birch Run my whole life just because of I can get clothes and such things cheaper, because they have outlet malls. So I think us being more, um, up to date with, with the world and having a younger mindset, um, when it comes to development, on focusing on the future. Um, the third thing would be, because mental health is the most important thing, uh, because everything starts with the mind, is creating, yeah, a rec center for our youth, but, uh, update rec center, uh, educating them on the importance of, um, meditation, the importance of credit, homeownership, things that they're not teaching our youth in school. Thirty seconds. The last thing. Yeah, yeah, yeah. Um, but yeah, those would be, uh, some key main points, things I would be fighting for.
Thank you. Adam Gainsley?
Well, I hope to do a lot more than five things, but, uh, for the sake of authenticity, I'm going to just rattle off the first five that I thought of, um, because I think those will sort of speak to things that are important to me. I couldn't help but start with literally concrete, um, safe streets is, uh, uh, an issue near and dear to my heart. I got my start in Ypsilanti as a member of the non-motorized advisory committee, uh, advocating for complete streets, meaning streets that are accessible to, um, pedestrians, bicycles, wheelchairs and cars, not just starting with cars and then adding, but starting with everybody in mind. Um, moving on, um, uh, I've been advocating for a balanced budget in, in Ypsie my entire time living here, uh, and I've gotten pretty good at the art and science of, of doing a lot with a little in a, in a budget, uh, with my time on the DDA. So continuing to, uh, um, add to our budget while not depleting our general fund is going to be a, a high priority for me. Water Street obviously is, is, needs to be at the top of all of our minds and the starting point there is to develop a, um, a coherent, uh, uh, idea of what we want as a community that we can take to developers as opposed to waiting to developers, waiting for developers to come to us with ideas. So I'm going to look to our, our staff to start that process and, um, put together a, a picture of what we want on water street. Going down my list, um, ordinance enforcement, and I promise you Sue, this is not because it's you asking, but ordinance enforcement, uh, is something, there are folks here who will, who will let you know that I have been talking about this since before this question. Uh, but ordinance enforcement in Ypsie is a huge issue. Uh, we need to add to that staff. We need to improve the technology that that department has, uh, and we need to make sure they're able to do their job well every single day of the year. That means in the dead of winter and that means in the middle of, of summer. And last but not least, and again, not because you're asking, but we need to open the bathrooms. That's all there is to it. The parks need bathrooms.
Thank you. Okay. Next question?
So the next question is from Daquan Harrison.
And we'll start with Nicole Brown and go straight down this way.
Good evening. My name is Daquan Harrison, the youth here, um, in Ypsilanti. Um, you all have taught, asked a lot, a lot of questions about youth, um, being at the table, mental health, um, collaboration and so forth. Uh, so my first question is, how do you see, um, the city council and the sc- our school, school board, um, here in Ypsilanti, um, collaborating on such issues? Um, also the second question is, um, whether being elected or not, um, how will you continue, um, doing the community work here and being, being seen, um, even post, um,
You get one, gotta have one question. Do you want that? Cause they only have two minutes to answer.
But you can't say that in two minutes. Um, and, um, so, um, how can you do that post campaign season?
So how to collaborate city council and school board and then what would I do regardless of what the outcome of the election? So, um, we've already spent a great deal of time trying to collaborate more with the school board, having joint meetings. Um, I do have a relationship with our current superintendent, um, one of our brightest principals of Ypsilanti High School is in the audience right now. So making sure that, you know, to strengthen those relationships and, and, um, have communication and discuss, um, you know, what's going on with our youth and how we can work together to really support our young people. Um, I do think that we can work more collaboratively, although we are two separate sectors that don't necessarily overlap as far as making rules and laws, we can definitely work together to support our young people and so that would be my, my intention. As far as regardless of how the election were to go, um, I have worked with young people for many, many moons. That's how I actually was introduced to running for city council, um, by the work that I was doing in the community. So supporting and continuing to support ozone house and corner health and parkage and these different entities and working with Ypsilanti High School and the youth that I, that I have already been working with. So to make sure that I am building the leaders of the future, um, that would be my goal, would be to create a legacy in young people to want to sit at this very table and run for elections whether they win or not, to want their voice to be heard. Um, and so I would put my energy into that, empowering young people to do what you're doing, to get up to the microphone and ask questions and talk about what they want to see, um, regardless of what side of the table they're sitting on.
Thank you. Karan?
Um, I think, uh, bridge in that gap would be mental health. A lot of the teachers, me dating the teacher, um, at times she joke about, you know, seeing the things she see on the news far as students coming in and shooting in the school, things of that nature. So, or even from that being that serious to just coming to school and not having their head on straight to be able to focus because of the things they're going through in the community or at home. So I think mental health would be the topic to bridge that gap. It'd benefit everybody, uh, all across the table from the youth to the teachers to, um, just all across the board. To answer his second question, I've been doing in the community before I became a candidate and I don't see myself ever stopping. Um, this all is a journey and, um, yeah.
Thank you. Adam?
Well, I can't talk about education without pointing out that my wife Jillian is running for school board and, uh, uh, so if all goes well this year, uh, I won't be able to help but collaborate on the edu- on the topic of, topic of, topic of education. So vote Gainsley every chance you get. But in seriousness, uh, we need to explore programs that we can work together with the, um, with the schools on, in particular activities for youth, uh, after hours. We have a dearth of options for kids when they get out of school, uh, here in town and that's led to some problems around town that, that we need to address. Um, and treating it as a, uh, a crime or a public safety issue is, is not the right way to, um, not the way, right way to, uh, uh, address that. We need to provide activities for our youth to be able to constructively use their time in particular in the gap between the end of the school day and their evening programs or when their folks get home from school or whatever else is going on for them in the evening. For the second question, um, I mean, obviously I very much hope to be too busy being a city councillor to have anything to do after this, anything else to do after this election. But if I were not elected, um, I would continue in my role on the DDA and continue to advocate for our downtown business, uh, uh, community and, and working to make sure that we have a, a active, vibrant and healthy, uh, downtown here in Ypsie.
Thank you.
I think there's a small divide because of the city budget, um, and the school budgets not, they're not, they're different budgets. And I think you can feel the brunt of that divide. Um, I think with young people, the, the best way to predict the future is to plan for it. And I think that there's no, there's the sparse or unintended, um, like there's very few young people at city council because city council hasn't planned to go out and find young people to bring in to actively engage. And we have to plan for that. Um, there's nothing that's just going to happen. And first, I think we should have a junior council or at least create an ordinance to have a junior council to watch the tactics, to watch the methods, to watch the proceedings, to be able to understand what politics are, what policy is, how it affects individuals, what groups it affects. So I think it's an, you, city council can use their position as a way to inform young people and to pass on the passions of why we do the work we do and, and as opposed to just expect them to come, listen to deliberations and get inspired. I think that's, um, but, uh, that was a great question, Daquan, because I see you in the school systems and, um, and like I say, I, I, I've worked for over, uh, I've been in, worked in over 40 schools and over, for over 29 profits. And so I have a very extensive, uh, youth history. But, um, so I do think, um, us taking the lead as city council to give young people an extension of what we do here. So I think that'd be very, um, a viable, um, way to do things.
Thank you. Do we have another question? This one will start with number two. So we'll start with Karan.
So the next question is from Rashid J. Atwater.
How y'all doing? Daquan kind of took my question. So I'll ask another one, but I want to add a comment. I know you all talked about adding a new rec center. Uh, we do have a recreational center. We got Park Ridge Community Center. So if you want it, we could just like uplift Park Ridge, uh, expand it. And then the programs that you thought about doing at the new rec, like bring Park Ridge and then we could do that, save some money maybe. But the question is, what would a perfect, what would a perfect relationship with Eastern Michigan University look like, uh, on and off campus?
Great question. I think, um, a relationship with Eastern Michigan specifically for War One, uh, be great, all the way down from education to, um, sports. In War One, um, the youth need a lot of, uh, role models. They need something to be able to look up to, something they can attach theyself to. Me being an artist here, I created a song called Ypsilanti some may know, um, and me showing Eastern Michigan to a lot of the kids when I went to perform at the schools, they glorified saying to, to me like I ride past there every day. And it drew, um, a lot, it sparked, it sparked the nerve with a lot of them. So I think having that perfect relationship or, I really don't know if the question is how are we gonna get the perfect relationship or how would it look, but, um, I think it'd look great. I think it'd look great. Yeah, having, yeah, having those role models for War, for War One, um, being hands-on. Yeah.
Thank you. Adam?
Uh, well, first, thank you for calling out, uh, the Park Ridge Rec Center. And I'd also add that that's not the only rec center in town right now either. Uh, EMU does have a rec facility and there's a small but growing contingent of folks who are pushing for that to be open to, uh, Ypsilanti citizens and the public in general. And that's, it's not right now, but there's a small but growing contingent of people pushing for it to be open to the public in particular, uh, as they go through their redevelopment process. And I'm, uh, very supportive of that effort and, and hopeful that that will succeed so that we will have a, another option as well. And more broadly, looking at our relationship with, uh, with Eastern, um, you know, we're, we have an opportunity to, to feed off each other here. EMU brings, you know, tens of thousands of people into the community who wouldn't otherwise be here. And that is, uh, feed on our streets, that's people eating in our restaurants, that's, uh, people using our libraries, that's, you know, that is people in our city, which is exactly what we want. We need to, to be as welcoming as possible and as cooperative as possible with EMU to, to support that effort. We also, uh, need to have a working relationship with EMU and that's, that's something that has waxed and waned over the years. And, and I for one, think it's going to be very important, especially in the coming years, that city council and, uh, EMU's governance, uh, bodies work together closely. And, and I'll be pursuing a, a strong relationship, uh, uh, with that body.
Thank you. Anthony?
A perfect relationship with EMU would be a serendipitous one. One in where we're equally beneficial to each other. Um, and how that would look would depend on, uh, we have to understand the needs of the university, understand their systems and how they work. And I think the, the university being within the city limits has to understand better how the city works and how we can better work alongside each other. I think students, when they come to EMU, um, should get an orientation to the city, because they come from other places, other cities, other countries and other states, um, to get a better feel of where they are, um, what that means, what Ypsilanti living is, what it means, uh, what's attached to that. It's not an island. Um, I, we want to, we feel welcome, citizens should feel welcome at Eastern Michigan as much as students who come from other places and other parts of the world should feel welcome within the city and not just confined to the, uh, area of the college. So I, I, I do think it's going to take, uh, some bridge work to repair some of the relationships, because we know that EMU's police, they ride around through the city. Um, and so they have certain jurisdictions that I'm sure professors don't have. So it, this can get tense between, like I said, their, their, uh, their, their extending bodies. So, um, since Sue Martin had left, um, um, I, I think this, the, the school's going in a different direction and so we should, I think it should be a meeting between like the mayor and the university president to have some understanding of the layout of what their vision is for the next five years and see how we on city council can get on board with that.
Thank you. And Nicole Brown?
So I think beyond the cross jurisdiction of the police, we need to work collaboratively. Uh, we have tried and, um, we've had a council meeting at least once a year up at Eastern for the past several years now, um, and just trying for us to extend our olive branch to them to try to work more closely. Um, I do think that, I agree with Anthony. He made a comment about when students come to Eastern, they should get an orientation to the city. I think that's a really great idea and Karan, I actually both like say, yeah, it's a good idea. But also utilizing students in the community. I know that we do have students that come, um, to Park Ridge or that go to, to Corner Health Center, that work as interns and give support in that way, but really making sure that our young people can see what, what, what going to college looks like, making sure that Eastern is open to the community so you can go on campus to do things and not feel like you have to be a student to enter that, that, that square block that, you know, EMU's main campus is on. Um, making sure that, you know, their officials, so that President Smith understands what Ypsilanti really looks like in the landscape and visits those parts of the community that he's probably never been to. I mean, I think it's really important to make sure that we are, um, showing each other the way and showing each other what we want things to look like and work collaboratively. I mean, I'm a proud EMU alum, um, I went to EMU for my four years of undergrad and I really enjoyed my time there. And I was able to work collaboratively, collaboratively in the community because of certain professors who wrote grants to do things in Ypsilanti or work with other students. But I don't think that we see that in every department or across the board, um, in, at EMU or a part of every curriculum and every, those people off every time, um, or every, uh, degree that people are trying to, to obtain. And so making sure that we are having a voice at the table with them around, you know, how can we utilize our students best? How can we get them to make Ypsilanti maybe their home? How can we get them to make Ypsilanti maybe their home, not just for the four years that they're getting their education, and also leaving a mark on the community that is positive and not just kinda like a passer-through.
Thank you. Do we have another question?
The next question is from Roderick Casey.
And this will start with Adam.
First of all, I'd like to thank each and every one of y'all for attending tonight to answer the public's question. And one of my number-one concern is, as a precinct delic, by the grace of God, I'm elected and also ran it for candidate for state representative in this district, I was very disappointed when I learned that the mental illness package that we worked on for over ten years to finally get to the people was not dispersed equally, all right? And my knowledge, and I asked city council to correct me if I'm wrong, and I found out also that the part of the mental illness for Ypsilanti was just put in the general funds. Now, if that's wrong, please, please correct me if I'm wrong. What would you do about this truth and levy, and also the equity of Ypsilanti having the highest mental illness rate and not getting a fair share of fundings coming this way? What would you do? Okay, that's two questions in one. And that goes out to each and every one of you at the table.
Sure. So to start with, I don't know that it was distributed equitably or evenly throughout the communities, but the other variable in how it was, how it was apportioned among communities was whether or not you had a police force. So communities that do have a police force were given some priority in the doling out of money. The fact that it's in our general fund currently, the way I look at that means that we just haven't decided what to do with it, not that we're gonna leave it there and spend it on whatever willy-nilly without considering where it's come from, but that we have not made decisions about it. Also, the last thing, I believe, if I understand correctly, the money that current council member Nicole Brown advocated for being earmarked for mental health purposes did come out of that. So we've earmarked a portion of it for mental health spending. I see council member Brown shaking her head at me, so maybe I don't have that piece exactly right.
Richard's in.
Oh, my gosh, I'm sorry. Council member Richardson. So we talked about this a little bit before, and the point I made before, which I'll reiterate, is that we're at the start of this process. This is money that's just become available to us, and we need to be able to, we need to be able to spend some time looking at what opportunities exist around the county and around the region, especially as other communities are figuring out what to do with this money and figure out where we can take advantage of economies of scale and partner with communities around us. And the other point I made earlier when we were talking about this was that one place where I would advocate for this money to be spent would be in training for our police force, so that they are, since they are often the first responders in situations where mental health is at play, we need them to be responding in a quality way and not training, not treating mental health issues as criminal issues. That's a broken system that we need to fix.
Thank you. Anthony?
I know it probably can seem like a betrayal to people who worked on this for so long, for funds to be collected and not being dispersed for their intended purposes. And is it four hundred thousand over the next eight years, which is like fifty thousand dollars a year?
City council.
No? Is it?
It's four hundred thousand dollars annually.
Annually, okay.
For Ypsilanti? How much Ypsilanti get?
Four hundred thousand.
Okay, four hundred thousand.
According...
Three hundred seventy-five thousand a year.
Well, okay, this is not, so what I would do personally, I think there's been times where, you know, affirmative action money has been collected and a small percentage of the population who was intended for didn't get it. Hurricane Katrina victims, a lot of money was, so we understand that money can be collected and is not used for the purposes. But four hundred thousand dollars, my stance was, I guess there's some accountability. I think another town hall meeting is in order for people to find out how the money can be spent beyond just some of our own personal ideas or plans for it, but the people who fought for it, I think the city council need to look them in the eyes and give them some credible answers. So I think there's more questions still to be asked, as opposed to answers to be given.
Thank you. We're going to Nicole next. And just to clarify, the question said about, I was reading the question, about four hundred thousand dollars. We've had some clarification from a council member that it's approximately three hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars a year. Exactly.
So the money was given, you know, for public safety and mental health. And so one of the discussions that was had was about how we would utilize those funds. And some of the things that we talked about were some of the things that constituents have been asking about for many, many years. So, you know, our parks, the restrooms, different things that are also public safety issues. And knowing that the county, at the county level, and the sheriff's department has been working collaboratively with our police department and others to work on mental health direct issues. So training for officers, training for first responders, and then dispersing that throughout the rest of the community. And so I think that we're only in the first year of deciding and trying to put things in place of how we're gonna use that, but it's for eight years ongoing. And so as we work on some immediate needs that the community has, then each year you can discuss further how else we're gonna use those funds. And so I think that that is the situation, is that we have to continue having that conversation and figuring out what is the best way and what programming and different ideas that we have to utilize the funds in the future, but starting with immediate needs that the community had already been asking about, and clearing out some of those quick wins that we could touch on.
Thank you. Karan?
I think, I really can't speak for, you know, where the funds went or why they voted the way they did, but I know for me, if I was in that position, I would simply just be in tune with the people and have the people in tune. It seems like when it comes to mental illness and mental health, and I could be biased in saying this, but it seemed like we would uplift a lot of people, a lot of minorities, specifically like in War One. So it seems like a lot of things get pushed to the side when it comes to mental illness and mental health, because it would uplift the people that's been needing it the most. And we keep talking about how we're gonna grow the city of Ipsy. We cannot grow it without uplifting War One. And the mental illness is the most important thing, so I think a lot of stuff gets swept under the table or looked over because it uplifted a lot of minorities.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. The next question is from William Simmons.
And we'll start with Anthony Morgan, and then we'll go over to Nicole and back.
I'm sort of a short man, but I do got a big voice. What is y'all vision for War Three, War Two, and War One? What is y'all vision for your wards? And what is your vision for this community? And I don't want y'all to relate off of each other. Give me your personal vision. Now, I heard a little bits and pieces about it, but please, tell me your vision.
Thank you. Ypsilanti 2034 is a vision about the next fifteen years. I think as a country, as a state, and as a city, we're grossly short-sighted. I sat and I watched, I worked at Willow Run until Willow Run wasn't there anymore. I was coaching at Ipsy High School as a Phoenix when the Braves disappeared, and now we're the Grizzlies. I think we move fast. We move, I've been here twenty years, and we've been moving forward so fast that we haven't lived up...
I'm getting all six.
Well, sir, well, guess what? We haven't lived up to the...
Let them answer the question.
So I'm not a lifer, but I'm a transplant. But I don't think...
That scares me sometimes.
Okay.
We'll have a conversation after this, but I'm gonna answer this question. But the ideal is looking forward. I know I was twenty years, I was twenty years old when I moved here, and now I'm forty, and I have a family. But a vision for War Three specifically is to have, I know Park Ridge, I mean, not Park Ridge, Prospect Park and its school, is to have it not so divided. I think our wards are divided, based on the access. We got Depot Town, Downtown is its own hub, then you got Eastern Michigan, then you got the South Side, which is its own space. And I think to unify somehow, find ways to unify with a collective vision. And the vision is the things that we share, like collaborative spaces, the things like having, like I say, family-friendly things, to understand that we're, when you have haves and you have have-nots in the city and you have certain disparities, you have to look at the things that bind us together, which is food, which is common spaces, which is safety. These things make us all feel human. And I think those are the things I wanna focus on with a fifteen-year agenda, like using, like I say, creativity and going across the board and trying to make it seem that it's not just War One, Two, and Three, but Ipsy.
Thank you. Nicole?
Well, you know, my vision for War One would be mainly, in all honesty, to de-stigmatize that area. I think that there is a stigma around the South Side that is not true, it's not real, that it's unsafe, that people aren't neighborly, you know, that young people aren't safe outside their homes, and all these other things that you've heard. So the main thing that I wanna do is de-stigmatize that area and show the life and the vibrance and the history, the rich history of War One. The next thing would be to make sure that those in the other wards and outside of our community feel safe coming over there, right? Coming to visit. Come see what, you know, has been talked about for so long. Come see the opposite of what you've been told. I don't think that there's a lot of times when you see that cross-section of individuals from War Two or War Three coming to hang out in War One. You just don't. But you see the folks in War One going over to War Three, going over to War Two for different reasons. And so I do think that it's really important to show the positive things about War One. I think it's gonna be imperative to uplift our youth. Youth is a really huge part of my platform, always has been, four years ago it was, and it still is now, making sure that we're giving them the support that they need, you know, teaching them those marketable skills, the things that are gonna uplift them, that are gonna move them forward. So my vision would be to really have a collaborative community overall that is filled with increased levels of pride across the city, not just the pride that you see in War One for War One, but for those in Ypsilanti to be proud, to say, like, my friends live in War One. That's what I wanna see.
Thank you. Karan?
Great question. My vision is simply uplifting. We could talk X's and O's all day, tax base, and, you know, and talk money for days, but when it comes to War One, they need a leader right now. We need somebody that the people can relate to. We need somebody that the people actually know. We need somebody that's not perfect. I feel like while I'm running, because, and I know that's not the question, but it ties into the answer, my wrongs have been a plus for me, because so many people can relate. So a lot of people who grew up on what we would call the South Side know that now they live in War One, based off of me running. So just uplifting, us focusing on the youth. The youth is the most important part of, it's our future. So a lot of us being in our urban communities, once you get to a certain age, it's kinda could be too late to try to make a change. So I say we spend that energy on the kids, not push people out and not say they don't matter because they're at a certain age, that's not what I'm saying, but specifically aim for the youth, because they are our future. And in order for War One to grow, we have to really tap into the minds of our youth, and we have to show up and be leaders. I could see the War One really growing, and then I see Ypsilanti as a whole growing. And it's like, for years, we've overlooked War One, pushed it to the side, and a lot of outsiders just prey on the land there, and they don't really care about the people, it seems like, and wanna uplift the people. So I see us uplifted and us being educated on citizenship, homeownership, the importance of credit, and just things all across the board.
Thank you. Adam?
I chose Ypsilanti as a place to raise my family intentionally, and that was not based on wards, that was based on our city. I moved as close to the center of the city as I could and chose that as where I'm going to raise my family. I'm going to send my kids to Ypsilanti Community Schools. My three-and-a-half-year-old daughter starts at YIIS next year, or this year, rather. And that's my vision for Ypsilanti. That's not based on wards. So little of the work we do is actually specific to our wards. The wards just determine where we get elected from. So I don't even have a vision for War Three in particular. I have a vision for Ipsy, and that's a place where my family can grow and succeed, all of us, not just my kids, but my wife and I, and if my kids choose to raise their kids here, them as well, can grow and succeed. And that's thinking about education, they can get quality educations here. That's talking about profession. I can continue to raise my family and earn a living here, and my wife can as well. Recreation, we can have fun here, we can have a vibrant culture where we're not having to go out of the city to have the experiences that we deserve. And, like I said, that's for Ipsy, that's not War Three, that's for all of us.
Thank you. Do we have more questions?
I got one more. I wanna...
Hold on, hold on. Hold, sir, sir, please.
How y'all gonna bring job, how y'all gonna bring job?
Okay. Next question is from Lee Tousen.
Okay, we're reversing order again, so we're starting with Anthony again. And we'll go backwards to Adam and across.
You only get one question.
One question.
Okay. Let me see which one is, all of them important here. Okay, all right. I heard talk about gun violence and these kind of things that we want to curtail, we wanna do what we can do to stop it. The South Side of the city has been tagged as a criminal-prone city, criminal-prone ward, let me put it that way. But we also have war, we also have crime in War Two, War Three, but they just not reported as much. So this question goes to each and every one of you there that's sitting on the thing. We talk about gun violence, drug sales, drug use, in the city of Ypsilanti. How would you, each one of you candidates, how would you describe yourself as a clean, criminal-record-free citizen who wants to represent your ward? And I'm gonna tell you why I ask that question, because we come up with so many surprises in federal government, we come up with surprises. Local government, we come up with surprises. I don't wanna come up with no surprise in the city of Ypsilanti from a candidate that who's running, that's gonna respectively operate in this city. So whoever you want to ask it first, I don't care.
You want the question?
I'm not sure...
The question is...
What, does everybody understand the question? I'm not sure, are you asking...
I'm asking them to describe, just because of the things that I talked about, right?
Right. Are you asking them to disclose if they have a criminal record? Is that what you're asking?
I'm asking them how clean they are. We wanna know.
All right, I hear what you said.
We wanna know how clean they are. We don't want no surprises.
Well, I reply like this, thank you for that question, Lee, Mr. Tousen. And I'm not certain about the bias reporting about the conditions of War One. We did, at Ypsilanti as a city, hire a principal that was under federal investigation. We did currently get under investigation for our city council doing things that were, let's just say, unprofessional at best.
Absolutely.
So when you think about, I personally, I grew up, I've been shot. I grew up in criminal activity. I have eleven brothers who've all been to prison. I've never been to prison. I grew up in Highland Park, so when you think about criminal activity or crime, or, I don't have a criminal record, it's crazy to be a young, well, not young anymore, but to avoid the obstacles that are out here for certain members of the community. So how did I avoid a lot of these things? Now, here's the thing, I've never, I haven't been accused of doing anything illegal, immoral, unethical, but I've done some stupid things, and that's not a crime. But standing here, but sitting here, I'm sure they have access in Google, you can find almost anything you wanna find now, so I don't have anything to hide. I'll just say that.
Thank you. Adam?
Sure. Well, I'll echo that I don't have anything to hide. I've been working for this city for nearly a decade in various capacities, most recently with the DDA, before that with the Non-Motorized Advisory Committee, before that with Bike Ipsy. Before that, I was on the student government at the University of Michigan when I was a student there. Um, and, and again, you can Google my name and no surprises will come up. Um, in, in thinking a little bit, uh, about the, um, the, the issues you mentioned with the image that the South Side has, um, that's a huge problem. And it's a problem because it's an image problem, and how do we fix that? Uh, and, and that's something that we need to address as a city and, and as a community, um, thank you. Um, and I don't purport to have all the answers, but that is a very important goal, and that is an unacceptable situation for the city to be in. Um, because it's, it's effectively racism and it's, it's not okay. Um, so I will just concur with your, uh, points that you made, and that those are absolutely issues that we need to address both as a council and as a community.
Um, to answer your question, um, I mean, I know I'm running against, uh, your daughter. Um, everybody here locally knows, um, to hit the Google button, um, so I really felt like that question was directly towards me. Um, I have a past, uh, I've been through things, um, just like, uh, Mr. Gangsley just said, a lot of stuff is just racism. And you can't, if it's a system set up for people like me to fail, being black, when we fail, we bump our head, we can't really judge them if it's a system set up specifically for you to bump your head. So it's never making an excuse, um, I've done things wrong, I'm proud to say at thirty-one and being black, as you see, I have tattoos on my hand, the whole nine, I don't have a felony. So to me, that's more important, uh, than a lot of things, um, I have no stipulations in schools, um, if you look on my Facebook, I do more work. And I've done more work than, and no disrespect to nobody, when it comes to this community than anybody sitting up here. So, um, like I said, I felt that question was, it was directly towards me, 'cause you know your daughter's criminal background, and I'm sure you know everybody else is up here. So, um, I stand on anything I've been through, um, any question personally, directly on a personal incident, I will answer, but that wasn't the question. But like I say, um, right now, War One, it'd be great for me to be the representative because I do have a criminal background. And there's so many people who was misrepresented that have criminal backgrounds that can relate to me.
Thank you. Okay, he's answered, no, see, it's, it's one question. Nicole?
So, um, so I actually will agree with Karan and say that, you know, everybody has a past, everyone has done things that, you know, they shouldn't have done. It just really depends on if you got caught or not, right? Like, that's the honest truth. Um, I also have tattoos, I also have made really bad decisions, and so I apologize if you feel that was directed towards you. Um, but what I will say is that the vision that's, that I have for the South Side, um, is to really, again, de-stigmatize, um, that area. And so that young men and young women who are living in a system that is built to be against us, don't have to continue to live in that perpetual cycle. Um, I really want to lift, uplift everyone, I work alongside everyone, I know Karan, Karan and I have a good and decent relationship. There is no bad blood there in any, in any way, um, and know that. So, at the end of the day, no, I don't have a criminal record, no, I've never been in any type of huge trouble, but I can go on record and say that I was investigated about going to China. Um, you know, my record was cleared on that because I did, I had no wrongdoing and no negative part in that, but that could have been something that could have ruined me. And so in knowing that, and knowing what I went through in that situation, I would never judge anyone who has a background, um, of things that can be seen as ill towards them. And so, um, I guess I would just stand on the fact that I look at people for who they are, um, what they stand for, and their heart, and what their passions are, um, and the good that they're doing in their community. And that is what I also uphold in myself, is that my plan is to do well and do positive things in the community, and that's what I'm going to do, um, and I'll stop there.
Thank you. Do we have another question?
Um, we have a question from Ricky Jefferson.
You're passing, you may pass. Okay. You're on the list.
I had some things at home to do, good evening.
Good evening.
Again, uh, appreciate you all being here, yeah.
This question will go, start with Adam.
Okay, and for your, uh, participation in running for, uh, office, to be a participant in, in this, in the city as far as elected official, good answer. So, as I stand here, I'll just, I don't know if it's been asked, but did someone ask you guys specifically one reason why you're running for office? Anybody ask that yet?
Not that.
Okay, well, that's the question, can you give me a reason why you're running?
Uh, mine is simple, my kids, I want to make sure that this is a place where they can grow and thrive, and everybody else's kids as well, it's as simple as that.
Karan?
Um, I just love Ipsy, I simply love Ipsy, uh, even growing up, being a top basketball player in the state of Michigan, my goal was to come home and play at Eastern. Uh, I didn't accomplish that, but just since all I can remember, I just love where I'm at, uh, where I'm from, um, yeah, just the love of the city.
Nicole? Um, I'm running for reelection simply, you know, to continue the work in a community that is near and dear to me. Um, a community that built me up to be the woman that I am today and do the work that I am doing, um, caring adults who supported me to be able to have a voice, to come in city council as a teenager, um, and voice my opinion on what was going on in the community, and although some of those same things are occurring right now, I want to continue to be that adult that can bring other young people to the table to voice their opinions, and have their needs heard and met. And so, again, my one reason would be to continue the work, to be better than I was before, to make the next four years two times as better as what the first four years of my, um, tenure have been. Um, and to make sure that I leave a stamp on Ypsilanti that is positive for our young people and all, you know, at large in the community.
I don't think people gonna do anything unless they're inspired or enraged. I was inspired and enraged, I was inspired at, with the potential Ypsilanti could be, and this, with this, uh, mantra of pride, heritage, and diversity and what it could look like, but then I was enraged at seeing people who grew up their, their whole life on the outskirts of the resources and, and the inroads. And so I wanted to balance the playing field, 'cause I'm pretty in the know when certain groups, but I know I'm just in, uh, I'm not a token, but I'm, I'm not as many as I would like. So I'm kinda want to be a bridge to, um, help find some equity with people who's been here their whole lives, who've just been on the outside of politics, business, education, social, um, social, um, status. And so I feel like I'm a citizen within Ipsy that has some of that, and I want to share it.
Thank you.
All right, um, we have a question from Noah Rucker.
Okay, we're starting with Karan on this question.
Peace, peace, how y'all doing today? What's up? Uh, brother Noah in Ypsilanti, uh, I'm out here in the community, I see a lot of y'all doing good work, so I want to say thank you first of all. And, uh, so my question, I hear y'all talking about some things, uh, y'all, y'all actually have plans and goals for, that's cool. Uh, this will add on to that list as well of what we want to know. Uh, I have a two-part question, is that possible? Uh, it's a quick question, which is, what you gonna do for the black community, and the second part is, uh, what is we gonna do about our parks, bless you. Uh, the parks has been abandoned, uh, no activities, and everything that y'all coordinating today of y'all goals could be activated at the parks, what y'all think of that?
Karan?
What, what was the last part?
What are you gonna do to vitali, I think vitalize the parks, or at least get the parks in use?
Yeah, we grew up in Ypsilanti using the parks as, well, for the black communities, that was our first daycare before we had daycares and schools. Uh, so that was our birth of education in America was the, the public parks, uh, forced by racism, but it worked. And now we don't have a level of education after high school and college to see y'all's focus on school board education, uh, we need an education outside of school. Uh, and we can utilize the parks, I said, what do y'all think about that idea? Utilizing the parks and as well, what is y'all planning on doing? Uh, we fought for a lot of gay rights, a lot of women's rights, a lot of white people's rights, what y'all gonna do for black people's rights?
Okay, okay, it'd be hard when, uh, they talk a long time, remember the question. Great questions, though, um, far as, uh, black people first, I'll start with that, uh, me being black, uh, obvious, um, it's really not a black or white thing, but it's a need thing, and if the black people that need to be uplifted will grow the city, that's what the focus should be. So, uh, it's a lot of things I have geared for War One that's pro-black, um, although there is other ethnic groups in War One, so they won't be shut out. But far as, um, when it comes to blacks, I think targeting our youth, to tie into your other question, uh, with the parks, I think that's a great idea on, um, using something that's open to the public, that's free, um, we can create a lot of, uh, programs through the park, I'm working hand-in-hand, I'm a board member of, uh, mentor the youth with, uh, Gail, and we're working on a summer program now, a curriculum, teaching the youth about credit, homeownership, the things I keep preaching over and over about, um, 'cause they're not gonna learn it in school, and, uh, I look at that as partially could tie into systemic racism. Um, right now, we need, in War One, like I keep reiterating, is to be uplifted, uh, we need to be taught, our youth need to be taught certain things, uh, so they won't be shocked when they get older and become adults on how the real world works, so, um, yeah.
Thank you. Nicole?
Um, so, you know, I would want to continue to support, to educate, and empower all people, but in particular, you asked a question about, you know, the black population. And so I think that that is ever so more important with what's happening in the world today. Um, I think that, you know, the African-American community is marginalized, and we all, well, mo, many of us know that. Um, and so doing my part to be an advocate and to be a sta, an avid supporter of, you know, young people and those who are trying to use their voice for positive things. Um, making sure, again, to educate and let them know, you know, the power of their voice, the power of their vote, the power of being at the table, the power of educating, exercising, I'm sorry, their rights. Um, as well as teaching them those marketable skills, those life skills that they're gonna need to succeed in the future. Um, as far as the parks, um, we are currently doing more than we've done in a long time to support our parks, and make sure that they have all the things and efficiencies needed for all constituents to be able to utilize them. So trying to get the bathrooms back open and doing that quickly, making sure that the maintenance is happening, the, the grass is cut, that the equipment that is there is, is safe, and able to be used by our youth and our children, um, and so making sure to spend that time with the money that we've set aside to make sure those things are happening, to make sure that we have, um, enough staff and that we can utilize volunteers to get into those parks and make sure that they are, are usable, um, for anyone who wants to use them in the community, and making that access easy, um, not something difficult or a whole bunch of ropes that you have to go through to be able to use the parks for events, um, or any type of other, um, activity that folks want to utilize it for. So just making sure to keep that ball rolling and to not stop at, you know, these budget activities that we just had, but to make sure that our hands are in it, um, ongoing and seeing it through. Um, so that folks get the most use out of the parks that are, we have so many beautiful ones that we can utilize, right on time.
Let's go to Anthony.
Thank you for your question, Noah, where did he go, okay, cool, thank you for your question, um. Well, as far as the parks, I want to start with that one, I think, um, utilizing common space, uh, for, uh, for purposes to move people forward is something that I think, uh, should be utilized in every ward. Now, everybody not gonna like what I'm gonna say, but I have to, um, when you think about, he said about black groups, when you talk about special groups, when you think about gays, lesbians, blacks, union workers, you have to have an infrastructure around that to support any type of growth like us, policy like funding and different things of that nature, and infrastructure that's gonna reinforce, uh, equity. The question is this, I didn't know I was a descendant of a slave, and so how do you integrate a slave labor force into a free society equitably and fairly? And the answer is, we have no evidence that has happened, there's no evidence. So you ask, how would I do with a black special group, I know according to the Universal Declaration of Human Rights, uh, we're on a weak treaty called Civil Rights with America. And we've been treated as such, on a local level, state level, and universally, and no one has come to our aid here in existing in cruel freedom. Immigrants know this, whites know this, and it's just an actual fact. And so to sit around here and act like what equity looks like, and there's no real credible, um, way to integrate, uh, people who were at the bottom at one point to make us equal, there's no way. But the progressive propaganda and the liberal lies have made it uncomfortable, and it's criminal. So, what I would do, we need the Universal Declaration of Human Rights, we need people outside, um, America, or, or the state to look at our plight, and, 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 and we need a, a better response than, to leave it to liberals and progressives here on the local level.
Thank you. Adam?
It's easy to think that, as a counselor, talking about equity is enough, uh, when it comes to issues of race and, race, race and color, uh, in particular, the black community, and in particular, in Ypsilanti. Um, but that's not enough, um, that doesn't recognize the situation that we're in. We're in a situation where the black community, uh, and our entire nation has been repressed and abused and, uh, taken advantage of, uh, and that has left them in a weakened position. And so looking at a policy and saying, is this equitable, is a good start, but it's not enough, we need to look at it and say, does this address the issues at hand? And I don't know what policies are gonna come in front of us that we're gonna have to look at through that lens, but I'm gonna look at them, look at them through that lens. I'm not gonna start, stop with equity, I'm gonna stop with fairness and justice. Um, and I'll, I'll tie that into the second question a little bit, um, thinking about not just the parks, but recreation in Ypsilanti generally, which is a broader issue than just the parks. Um, I mentioned earlier in the night that, um, we have a, a, a serious issue with a lack of, uh, programming and activities for, for youth in Ipsy. Um, and the parks are a great, uh, can be a great part of that, uh, of the solution to that, and, and, uh, the city can, um, do a lot of work and make a lot of progress in terms of providing, uh, uh, programming for kids, uh, but we need to make sure that that programming is available throughout the city. Um, you know, folks like to talk about parks, and we automatically talk about Riverside and Frog Island, and while those are great parks, uh, that ignores the entire south half of the city and the, you know, many parks that are down there. So we need to be talking about those parks as well. Um, and last but not least, I'll just hearken back to what I said earlier, we gotta open the bathrooms in all the parks that have them, parks that don't have them are going to need bathrooms. These need to be places that families can take their kids and spend time and not have to run out every time they need to go to the bathroom or something, and I'll stop there for time.
Thank you. Do we have more questions?
We have another que, question from Brian Foley.
Okay, this one will be going, starting with Nicole Brown, and then we'll come around to Anthony and go back.
How you doing? I'm Brian Foley, lifelong resident of City of Ypsilanti, also City of Ypsilanti Sustainability Commissioner. Uh, my question is almost gonna be redundant in nature because a lot of those questions has been asked, but I'm gonna ask a specific question, right? And, uh, ask for a specific answer instead of generalization. Um, let me preface this by saying is that, because I am a lifelong resident of City of Ypsilanti, I'm very protective of my sis, uh, city. I'm very concerned about who's running and what have you, so I always look at people with skepticism, people who are not native or indigenous Ypsilantians, if you will, okay? Why, what, the question was asked, um, why do you want to run and represent our community, okay? The question is, the City of Ypsilanti's motto is pride, diversity, and heritage. And we do know that a lot of attention is played to the pride and to the diversity. The heritage is being glossed over like it doesn't exist, um, and almost pushed to the side, okay? So being a South Side lifelong resident, very familiar with our history, other people who came here, why they came here, we can speak of, um, three historical, two historical figures at least. We know Harriet Tubman came through here a few times, we know Frederick Douglass has spoken in downtown area at least- We know Frederick Douglass has spoken in downtown area at least twice. So this city has a huge heritage, not simply in the African-American community, but also in the, if you will, the Caucasian or the European community also. So what is the city going to do to make sure that the heritage of the City of Ypsilanti mains intact, remains intact as it is? And focus is given to it, and that's not to knock the diversity or the pride, but there's a lot of attention that is giving to those two, um, portions of the motto. And the heritage portion is totally been overlooked. So what specifically is your plan? Not your ideal, your plan to make sure that the integrity of the heritage of the City of Ypsilanti maintains intact?
That's a really amazing question. My plan would be to first utilize those who know that rich history. So to make sure that that history is known, um, across the board and it's, and it's documented in a way that will always be available to folks. So that, that, that history continues to be taught and passed down. Because if we don't pass on those stories, we don't pass on that information, then it will, it will go away regardless of who moves in or out. Um, the second thing would be to make sure that, to protect it, right? So we've had many conversations about who's coming in and out of the city and who do we want here and who, who don't we want here? And although I am open to the diversity and the pride and making sure that others have access, um, to the community, making sure that we protect those spaces that are, um, that are special and that are historic, in historical context. Um, I think that we need to make sure that that information is spread widely so that we are not overlooking things, that we are not, um, ignoring information that we're receiving. And so may, ha- having more of a listening ear and going and visiting those spaces and visiting those people so that I can learn the history as well. Um, so that I have a better, uh, knowledge base to advocate, um, on behalf of, of history and of heritage in the community. Thank you.
Um, I would say, um, education, educating the youth, um. Being a representative of War One, I would fight specifically, um, in our local school system, uh, when it come to, for example, black history. We seem to talk about Martin Luther King, Malcolm X, uh, the same story, but we have our own local heritage here that, um, should be celebrated. It should be remembered, um, it should be held on to and protected. So I will fight far as the education on implementing it in the schools in some type of way. I know as a council, uh, men, that would be kinda difficult because those are two separate entities. But far as you just reaching out to the schools, I speak at the schools a lot already. So it's not rocket science, uh, to be in that position, to have that power, to reach out to the school, to come in and simply have certain days on educating the youth on what's going on, what has been going on in the heritage of Ypsilanti. Um, uh, as you can see, I keep speaking on the youth because they're our future. And, um, in order to make a change, a real change and to grow, you have to look years ahead. And the only way we could do that is by instilling into our youth.
Thank you.
Sure. Uh, my first job in, uh, supporting and uplifting our heritage is to fully understand it. And I'll admit that some, that's a process that's ongoing. I am, I'm not there, I probably won't ever be to the point where I'm fully, you know, cognizant of what our heritage is, but I can only get better and I'm going to continue doing that. Thinking about things that I can do as a counselor are, um, uh, the first thing that comes to mind and, and it's a project, uh, or a series of projects that I've really loved are the, uh, the murals that have been going on around town. And the reason I think that's really important is because, um, not only does that, uh, sort of create an archive and a, 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 a place where that knowledge and understanding is stored, but it makes it visible and it makes it easy to find and it, it puts it out in front of us. And I think that's, um, we need to look for more opportunities like that in the city, uh, uh, as a, as a council and as a community, we need to support those and, and grow our support for those. I'd also like to echo what Nicole was saying about needing to make sure that that lore is not lost, that we don't lose documentation of, of our heritage and, uh, continue to grow and expand it, especially as we have opportunities for, uh, more rich multimedia, um, uh, uh, storage and experience there. Um, that's something I think the city needs to be active and, and supportive of. And finally, uh, uh, as a counselor, part of my job is going to be to interact with the, with the community. And, and obviously part of the community is, is our youth and our, and, uh, kids in our schools. And, and, um, I'm going to consider it a very important part of my job, not even just coming from, uh, a place of thinking about our heritage, but just from a place of bringing our kids up and, and, uh, uh, setting them up to succeed, um, interacting with them and teaching them about how the city works. And, and part of that's going to be helping them to understand and making sure that they have, um, opportunities to understand our, our deep and rich heritage.
Ypsilanti's been around for a hundred and sixty-nine years, and I think it's safe to say that what heritage is, it may look different to different people. When you think about heritage, we're talking about our customs, our language, the happenings, the logistics of, uh, the times. Talking about families, like the Bassists who've been here since the late nineteen hundreds, or the Frenches, or the Beards, or the Fullers. We're talking about groups of families that have moved and been in places for some time, accommodated by an environment and, and trying to make the best of things. So when we're talking about Ypsilanti's heritage, we have a heritage festival and we gotta wonder what that represents. So when we say in heritage, there are different, we're talking about the food we eat, are we talking about our terminology, are we talking about what we're known for?
I'm talking about the dictionary definition.
Okay, so we're getting, with, with our heritage, the things that makes us proud to be who we are, um, I think that is historically divisive. It's been divided, I know Matt Siegfried, uh, did some history or at the library and it goes back to Yps- and you just mentioned some famous people who've been here. And the division in Ypsie City has been historic. And so I know that heritage for one side or whatever side versus other side have been different. I know there was, um, a, a, African-American festival that was here in Ypsie for some time. There's one in Ann Arbor that moved.
No, it's one.
Okay.
Okay, by, by Park Ridge, okay, I, I know it's one in the summer by Park Ridge. But I, I'm talking about from people who've been here thirty, forty years and you're a lifelong, who tell me what it used to be, that, and it's no longer that, so.
It still is.
Okay, okay, uh, okay. Okay.
It's not a debate, Ben.
Yeah, it's not a debate, so, so what I'm saying, that's cool. Um, so I, I heard it was the grander of what it is and it's, 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 it's a small scale of what it used to be. And, um, again, being a transplant twenty years, I can't tell you what happened thirty years. But I think, again, redefining what heritage is, and of course, we have our, our, um, our historical societies and we have our, uh, libraries and we have our, um, museums that tell and teach the history of Ypsilanti that anybody can go to at any time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Don't worry about it.
So at this point, um, our list has been exhausted. Is there anyone who hasn't asked a question yet who would like an opportunity to ask a question?
Yeah. Okay, and so we started with Nicole before and we were supposed to come back around instead of going forward. So we're gonna start with Nicole again and come back to Anthony so that I can.
And just, um, say your name before you ask?
Hello, everyone, I am Desiree Simmons. My question is, as a person who goes to council on a regular basis, and sometimes I feel unwelcome there. And especially when bringing ideas that might be different from things that council is already considering. How would you really open up access for people who don't feel that the council chambers are for them? As a way to bring them into the process and to bring a space for them to help to make decisions that are important to the city?
Thank you.
Good question. So the first thing that I would say is to make the space itself look more welcoming. Um, it is not necessarily the most exciting place to go and not most, most welcoming, um, environment. And that has a lot to do with the aesthetics of it, the setup. Make it feel like a place that a conversation is gonna happen and that is welcoming to those who want to be there and comfortable for people to be there. Let's get the air fixed so that you're not either super hot or super cold while you're in the building. Or, you know, our, our media, um, have, you know, an ability to project the packet in a way that people can actually read it and see it and interact and be, be up to date, you know, on what's happening at the table, the things that council members are looking at at the table. That's the, the first thing. Um, the second thing would be, you know, to, to interact better when community members come in and, and speak their piece. I think that the way the audience participation is set up, and it was like that long before my time, um, it's been that way. Um, it's not necessarily, uh, a conversation. It really is having constituents talk at you and then say, well, we may or may not respond, and so, uh, you gotta deal with that. I think that we have to have a way more communicative way and a welcoming way to, to approach that, that as well. So that, you know, if someone gives, lends us an idea, um, we may, we may not be able to have a back and forth, of course, because we have to move on with the business of the meeting. But being able to follow up with folks afterwards and say, you know, I heard what you said and I think that's really valuable or that's really great and we'll see what we can do, let's meet to talk about this further. I think it takes all members of council to reach out to, to the, the, the people who are coming to the table to talk to us. Not everybody's willing to do that, so if you're willing to come and you're there, we have to va- put value in that and make people feel valued when they do so. Um, I would hope that we're doing a better job than we've, than we've been doing in the past, but I know there's, there's a long way to go. And there's a lot of things on the council side that we have to continue to work on among the, the space, um, and interacting with, with those who come and speak to us.
Thank you. Uh, so we're coming around to Anthony.
I know when you go into the principal's office, it can be a little intimidating or you go to a police station. I think it's the same thing going to city hall where it could be imposing because they're, they're to do business and it seems like they're up on high. And I can imagine coming into an envi- an environment like that, that it would seem as if we're already in our place as opposed to, we're out in the community across from you as opposed to looking down at you. Um, I think, just think the, just the aesthetics of that, uh, respect would change. Maybe, this is just something a little quirky, maybe since we're doing business so much, maybe it should be a theme song at the beginning and lighten up. Politics today, something, because we're gonna work on certain heavy things that I think maybe, uh, or even I know in, in churches, they do a check-in, like you're a visitor, stand up. Like let us know why you're here, at least to give a, maybe change the order of business, I don't know. Maybe they do so much deliberation and to the point where it's exhausting and then somebody gets to talk for three minutes and without a give and take. So I think maybe it could bear to fudge the order of business a little bit, maybe get a little invite, talk to people, um, and then do the business and so they can have some input and say. But again, um, I think, um, they're there to do business and if I'm elected, I'll be there to do business, but hopefully I can wear a smile and be more inviting. But I definitely think, um, when you come into that, that area, it's, uh, it's, it's like the principal's office or a police station that already has its, the murkiness of what goes on in there. So I think that could be changed a little bit.
Thank you.
Well, I think one of the, the first things the city can do to make itself feel or, or appear more welcoming is, is to be more visible. That, again, goes back to my work with Ypsie Live where, uh, part of the goal there is to expose the rest of the city to what, the, the rest of the community to what the city is doing. And hopefully by making that visible to everyone, people are a little more comfortable seeing that, yeah, people do actually get up at every city council meeting and talk. And there, there's dialogue to some extent, uh, even though it's in the framework of, of public input, it is happening. So continuing that work to, to improve the city's visibility, especially in the, uh, news desert that we look in, which is gonna require some, some creative thinking to project ourselves out there is, is a good first step. Thinking about myself as a counselor, uh, making myself accessible is going to be, um, is gonna be key. Uh, so that means, you know, not just being at council meetings and listening to public input, but that means office hours, that means town halls, that means dialogue with citizens, with constituents, with community members. So that, so that it can be, take it outside, take the communication outside of the framework of a meeting, uh, that has things that it needs to get done and, and have that discussion so that people can get familiar with me as a person, with me as a counselor, be able to ask those, those deeper questions and, and get to know the nuance of what I'm thinking as opposed to the little soundbites that typically end up happening at meetings. So, so exposing myself to the community as a counselor, uh, uh, will also be key. The other thing that I've been advocating for, for quite a while now is, is, uh, breaking out of the, um, of the just having council meetings pattern. Um, I, I've spoken to council a few times about the fact that we live in a news desert and that means that it's more, much more difficult now to get the word out to the community about what we're doing as a city. And so I think it's gonna become more and more important for us to take meetings out into the community, have smaller, uh, more informal meetings, town hall style meetings where there can be some dialogue, some, some question and answer format to the conversation, uh, and I'll stop there for time.
I simply think, great question, too, good seeing you, Des. I think citizenship, um, as political figures, we tend to always want and dictate, um, to the people, what we think should go on, things of that nature. By educating them on citizenship, we giving them rights and letting them know their rights as a citizen, what they can and can't do. Letting them know you can come down to the city hall to voice your opinion. So first, starting with citizenship on that education, um, I think it'd give people a sense of, um, like they're important or they're a part of what's going on. Being in the community and showing up at people's doorstep is gonna get them to the city hall, um, constantly. Once, we tend to always, like I said earlier, uh, the campaign doesn't start. Once you get in the seat, you still supposed to do the same things you did to win the people over. It's like a relationship, you meet somebody, you got everything good to say in the beginning, and then once you got that person, things tend to change. We have to do whatever it takes to win the vote and continue to do that same thing, but enhance it. And that's simply being out in the open and being in the public and being accessible to the people, educating them on citizenship so they will know, hey, instead of me getting on Facebook or Twitter and complaining, I can literally go down to the city hall to the people that can make a difference and voice my complaint. A lot of people don't know that because we tend to not educate them on it. And then when we do show up, it's about what we want from them, we wanna vote or, uh, you know, whatever the case may be. So it's about giving, uh, once we give enough to the residents, we will receive back in return what we, the things that we, uh, looking to acquire.
Thank you.
Okay, so, uh, we actually have a question that was submitted through Ypsie Live. Um, so I'm gonna read that question and then we'll have time for one more question and then we'll have closing statements. Um, so Christina Fitzgerald posted on Ypsie Live's livestream of this. Um, and she said, I'd like, um, I'd like to know how the council candidates have a particular city on which we could model our future financial success.
We start with Karan.
With me? Um, I would say Canton. I think Canton is a very lucrative city, um, have a lot of things that people tend to wanna do that's family orientated, which draws people from other cities to come and spend their money there. Canton seems pretty strict driving through, uh, you tend to get pulled over a little bit more, so it lets you know it's a lot more safer. So I think, um, Canton, uh, you look at their developments, they develop things pretty quick out there. Every time you drive by, they're building something new and everything that they're building, it seemed to be more up to date. Instead of some, uh, typical old development, they're more current, what, what's going on that, um, kids would tend to like to do. So, uh, I definitely would say, uh, Canton.
Yeah, we'll go to Adam next.
So I'll admit that I don't have a specific city, uh, to think of as a model, and the reason for that is, is because there isn't a model out there. We have a lot of sort of unique, uh, or rather a unique combination of, um, uh, financial, uh, our, our, our financial situation is very unique in the world. Uh, but there are a couple of, of things that we can look out into the world for examples of. The first is, is Water Street, obviously, this is a huge chunk of land in the middle of the city that the city owns, that's undeveloped, uh, that we're paying a large amount of debt on. And there are other cities that have that situation. Minneapolis, Minnesota has a large, uh, or rather had a large, uh, piece of land in the middle of town that was, that was developed over the last, um, I think it was, uh, uh, in the last decade. So let's look to them, let's see, how did they work with developers, what did that relationship look like? How did they go through the process of deciding as a community what they wanted there? How did they work with the developers to get, uh, the project off the ground and completed? And how does it look now and what, you know, what did, what regrets or what, what would they have done differently looking back at it? The other, the other situation that's a little bit more common in the world is we're a very severely, if you will, post-industrial city. We've lost a huge amount of jobs and a huge amount of housing and a huge amount of population, uh, due to the, not collapse of the auto, auto industry, but the, the contraction of the auto, auto industry. Um, so let's look to communities around the world, or around the nation and around the world, um, that have gone through city, uh, similar. Where have, where have factories closed and, and how have those cities thrived going forward? There's lots of opportunities, there's lots of good knowledge out there, it's our job to go out there and find it and bring it back to Ypsilanti.
Thank you. Anthony?
I would be disingenuous if I said I sat up all night thinking about this, but I have been at a place called Little Five Points in Georgia. It's a small place that kinda reminds me of Ypsil- Ypsilanti in Ann Arbor. And being there, um, it makes you wonder, it makes you wonder what Ypsilanti could be. Um, and I did some research, it's a small city in Idaho by twenty-four thousand, um, citizens where, um, they control their own population. They control their own money system with local public banking, um, to be able to control their destiny, um, their infrastructure. Um, I don't know what it would take to do that, but to think about, uh, maybe our city budget, our school. budget, our school budget being, finding some common ground so to have some financial stability. But only reason why I mentioned that city, um, because both of Five Points and the, in Idaho, surrounding it, we have places that are like a Detroit, like a Mecca, like a, like an Ann Arbor. So we have technology, um, art, food, music in, in, in places that could support th- this space. And so, um, nothing specific, like I, I wouldn't, I just think there's guidelines and, uh, certain, um, ways to get to where they were and I would probably do more studying and research on how those cities got to where they are, um, because they have a big culture, a big music, um, big food, uh, organic food scene, things that I think, uh, Ypsilanti holds dear, so we can, uh, find some kinda, um, models that we probably could fit into our budgets.
Thank you. Nicole?
So yes, this is not a question that I actually thought about, uh, prior to hearing it, but when I heard the question asking, you know, a city that Ypsilanti could model, um, I look beyond the fiscal parts of it, the things that are about money, but look about, look at, you know, the energy of the community and inclusion. And, um, the city that immediately came to my mind is San Francisco, although we're very different as far as like budget and what money we have to use, but I look at how, um, their bodies work together. I look at the fact that, you know, their students are, um, involved in their city government and have an opportunity to come and sit at the table and participate fully in the decisions that are being made in that, in that community. I look at the fact that the city works alongside, um, many of their, um, nonprofit organizations and they work hand in hand to battle homelessness, to ba- to, um, to battle stigma, to battle all these different things that are marginalizing different communities, and that's what I would wanna see in Ypsilanti. I would wanna see, um, us look like a community that the city and its staff and then all the community members work hand in hand to make sure that we are stronger together, um, and, and not weakening each other by bickering and fighting over this pot of money or this pot of money. Um, and so when I think about that community currently and all the changes that they've been seeing, they just elected their first, um, African American female mayor, you know, the diversity that you see there and the inclusion and the, the support across the board, that is not necessarily about what you look like or what, or who you are, what you stand for, it's more about uplifting the community as a whole and making sure that they support one another, that is what I would like to model.
Thank you.
So, um, this is the la- last question, does anybody who hasn't asked a question yet have a question?
Okay.
All right.
So we'll move to the closing statements and we're gonna start with Anthony and go across the table that way.
I wanna say thank you for having me here, it was really, uh, fun and engaging to be able to speak with you. I have more questions in my closing remarks than even the statement. So the questions are, what is policy? Who develops policy? Who affects the elected representative officials' view on policy? How does policy affect citizens? Why is this important? What does it mean for a city? What is political science and what are politics? These are things that I think, uh, the average John Q. citizen, um, needs to be informed on. And moreover, what are the main qualities needed in those that have ambitions to govern his fellow man or woman? And these are the things that I wanna discuss beyond fiscally, socially, like what characteristics does someone need who looks to represent a diverse population of people? And that's ethic, integrity, compassion, principle, personal and professional service, um, decision-making ability, collaborative understanding, the ability to assess, delegate, and listen. And these are the skills of working in social justice for 20 years and working in nonprofits for 15 years and working in the education system that I've had to work hand in hand with people who don't look like me, who don't agree with me, and some who do, to make things happen. And that's the kinda candidate I want you to know that I am. Thank you.
Thank you. Adam?
I'll also say thank you, uh, very much to everybody for coming out and the, uh, amazing questions that we've been asked tonight. We've covered a ton of ground, more than I would have imagined, uh, imagined possible in just a three-hour meeting. And that tells me that this job is, is a complex, nuanced, uh, intricate job that's going to take a lot of thoughtfulness and a lot of attention, uh, to a number of different things. And while I know my ans- answers tonight haven't been perfect and I haven't gotten everything exactly right or hit every nail exactly on the head, I think I've shown you that I'm very far along that path and that I'm making good progress and that I will, as a counselor, be able to, uh, take this community and the city forward, uh, in a strong and vibrant way. Um, and I thank you all for the opportunity to do that.
Thank you.
I wanna say thank you for having me. Um, a lot of this is, uh, new to me, I'm learning a lot as I'm going. Uh, one thing I always will remain is honest at all times. So for example, earlier when I said I was uneducated about something that can answer the question, it's 'cause literally that's exactly, I didn't know the answer to it. So I think that's more important than, um, thinking we know everything. No disrespect to our council, but as we seen just with the International Village thing, a lot of people thought they knew or whatever the case went wrong, but a lot of people just wasn't honest. And I'd rather just let the people know on, I don't know that. And how could, and I'll figure out, like the question that was asked to me earlier that I didn't know, uh, I have my mate writing everything down, I'm gonna go research that. And, uh, so I have a solution later on. Um, I would like to say publicly that, uh, I love that the fact that me and Nicole are both running, being young and, uh, black and, uh, we're both trying to represent War One. Uh, in our black communities, you tend to see rap battles and people going back and forth and beefing. And I think we are representing War One good, we're class, we're smiling, we're chatting with each other and it's kinda new. You usually typically don't see that in, uh, politics. You usually see people bashing each other or even out in the public when I'm knocking on doors and people ask me who I'm running against, I speak highly of her. And I say, I got my work cut out. She's educated, she's smart, she's young, and, um, I think it's great for War One. I think, uh, win, lose, or draw, I'm still show up and do what I'm supposed to do. And, um, I just think we really could, uh, make a huge change regardless of the turnout if we work together still.
Thank you.
Um, so yeah, I would like to absolutely thank you all for being here and thank those who are watching and thank the League of Women Voters for having us. Um, you know, one thing I will echo is that it's really exciting to see multiple people running for each of these seats, um, and really excited to see that there is some energy in the community around different people wanting to do the work, do the good work and the hard work that it is, um, to sit in the public eye and to make decisions that affect a, a grand and great number of people. Um, you know, I think I'm just really excited about the opportunity to be able to continue and build upon what has already been laid, the foundation that has been laid, um, and, and to be able to really use, um, the knowledge that I have gained to, to move forward, but also to continue to learn. I think that, you know, echoing Karan, this is an ongoing learning process. No one ever knows it all and if you think you do, then you're in the wrong business because every single day is an opportunity to learn something new. Um, I do wanna comment that yes, I think it's super exciting that we're able to do this and maintain a friendship and be okay and know that no matter what happens, um, the respect is there and the work is gonna be done. Um, that is the, the most important part. I do wanna add that, you know, the work that I do daily, I work in children's mental health and we talk about connection and connectedness and how important it is for young people to be connected to caring adults and that can be the single most important thing to create change in the community. And so, you know, um, what I, what I feel like I bring ultimately to the table is the ability to connect and the ability to accept those as they are, every person as they are, and, um, a- and utilize that passion and compassion to move forward for the greater good of all people and that's what I intend to do. So again, win, lose, or draw, um, that's the work that will continue in this community and I look forward to the opportunity to continue to serve the city of Ypsilanti.
Thank you.
All right. Well, thanks so much. Um, thank you to all the candidates for participating in tonight's forum and to those who asked questions. Thanks so much to the Riverside Art Center, um, for this wonderful space. Thanks so much to, um, Roberta Wojcik Andrews for being our moderator tonight and, um, to Jesse Miller and
Nicholas.
And Nicholas, um, for working on sound and video and for the, um, and let's see. So this will be, um, this will be on YouTube, you'll be able to find it on YouTube, also on the Ypsilanti Live Facebook. Also, at some point, there will be a link on LWVAnnArbor.org and you can look, um, for the link to, um, yeah, so it'll be up there along with other forums. Um, for additional nonpartisan information on candidates and ballot issues, you can go to vote411.org, which is the league's voter resource guide covering local, state, and federal candidates and, um, current proposals that will appear on your ballot. And I also just wanted to mention some other forums going on. Later this week, um, a seat at the Table Ypsilanti, which is a youth-led organization, is going